Well, actually, if we could borrow the EDC's microphone. They have a microphone hook up that Ira can't us.
Does everybody speak up?
Yeah, you guys all have to speak up, or else.
I can't, right?
No, no, I can't.
What I might do is just.
Way too much information.
Try to do it this way and get a little bit more. Get a little closer with the mic.
Are we set?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to bring in a run of plenty board meeting to order at 7:05. Stop by calling attendance.
Marty Hay.
Jimmy Flower.
John Nerkin.
Roger Moore.
Rich Canong.
Ted Redway Planner.
Antarctic Board Secretary.
What we have on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes. New application, which is Southern Main Marine. Item three is proposed, major land use ordinance. Downtown business district and comprehensive planning. Ted, you want to bring us up to date, or should we let Paul Gabbay start out?
Well.
We're in the minutes. That's right.
We're in the minutes. Because we have three sets to do?
Yes. All right, we'll start with the minutes of. June 13.
Move to accept as written.
Yeah. Second half.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I have to abstain, I wasn't given.
Okay, one abstain.
Well, you weren't there for that one?
Yep.
You were in or out? Yes or no?
I was in. Yes.
Okay, we got the June 27th. I'll start with the draft minutes from the site walk.
Move to accept.
I need to, since I wrote the minutes, I need to make a minor correction on the name for the applicants, Savannah, Teria, and Mano. Cody, sorry.
Mano.
Mano. Okay, other than that, I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Wait a minute, I don't know if you want to note that I came in late, but I did, was there. I did do the site walk.
Yeah. You didn't come in very late.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but your name is Ted.
No, I know, but I did.
Okay, just for the record.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? So move. Plenty board meeting, which been placed at seven o'clock on the 27th.
Move to accept.
Yeah, second half.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstain. Okay, on to our first part of business. Southern Main Green. Plan A recital review is a proposal removal of existing 1125 foot square building with box trailers constructed at seven, to construct a 7,776 square foot replacement building and relocate the existing entrance to Fulton Road on a 2.98 acre parcel containing an existing marine sales service historic facility located at 2461 Fulton Road, tax map 12, block 4-2, the DI District. B D L Holdings LLC is the owner and Paul Gabbay is P D's, the applicant's engineer. Paul, you want to bring us up to speed?
Sure. Um, I guess the last time that we were here, we came forward with a sketch plan, trying to give a board an idea of what Paul was, what direction Paul was going in. Sketch plan except for this phase is pretty much the same that we talked about originally. Um, we changed it a little slightly, instead of having a 45 degree corners, round three corners, made it a little bigger. But we proposed the building, it's pretty much the same that we already had. We're going to attach the existing building, metal will attach, and we're a little 10 foot, 8 foot wide attachment. It's real achieved to do that, instead of trying to connect the weak lines fast in the building. So changed it a little bit. And then more importantly, we're trying to phase, trying to show the entire build out for the project. We'd like to modify this existing lot. Make it small lot for retail, for sale at later dates. And increase, we build two more storage buildings, boat storage buildings, cold, boat storage buildings, similar to what he's already got. Uh, phase one, because Ted talked about things, you know, what's really going to happen here. Well, we'd like to stock construction, you know, September of 2013, start blasting, start doing the driveway entrance. And truly thereafter sometime in October, hopefully start foundation work. I think you want to be moved in around March, you said, right?
Yeah.
Would be our ultimate goal for this. So first thing that we would do, obviously, is construct our entrance. And then obviously, start constructing this building. The next phase would be to, hopefully, things go well in August of 2014, build another cold storage, build into the boat storage. A year later, you know, hopefully this can get all full and rented, that'll generate some income. So in August of 2015, is when you'd like to add the next building. This here, what he wants, is pretty much identical to the existing building he has, that he's doing boat repair right now. This is more, can be boat repaired, but Paul's thinking of getting back into the boat building business. So this would be something where he'd have a boat actually there for, I don't know how long a time, they built the boat. A year?
Probably, a year, probably.
You know, so his ultimate goal would be to create another building for actual boat building. So we're not sure when that would take place. And obviously, first thing he wants to do is move it to a sales building. Hopefully generate some income in the following year, build this future building, and then the next future building. Couple of things that Ted brought out, and I'll try to remember all of them in one by one, but I can see how Ted is confused. This here is the future buildings hatched, future building hatched. This is going to be the future gravel ours to get to those buildings. This is not future gravel, this is actually going to be paved to this point with a gravel entrance to the site. So I think Ted, you probably thought that. Because this said future, that was future, and that wasn't.
Yeah, it's the same pattern, it was the same.
Correct, so obviously I have to make sure, this is obviously going to be built, pavement to here, with gravel access to the go yard. Ted was going to say, well, how is it possible, how are we going to access the site if you stop the road right here, is what he thought. Obviously not, we're going to be coming in and accessing the site. The customers, I mean, the employee parking, ours are going to drive in, and go to the rear parking area of the site, that's for the employee parking. Customer parking, ours is going to be on the paved, new paved surface. So I hope that takes care of some of the access. Uh, Ted did bring up a good point as far as this lot, I do have to make sure that I have substantial capabilities on that lot. So that's something we will make sure before I submit the next time around, because obviously, can't affect it, and the lot's really useless. So I've got a feeling though, that it will be okay in this area, but I will make sure. Obviously, if you want to mod this site in the future, obviously it's a tough site, there's a lot of ledge, it's going to, it's going to be a costly site for someone to build on. But you know, they're going to have to spend some money blasting this site out. But obviously, you can't create a subiquitous, that exists. But you can surely blast a site and make it work. So we do realize it is a tough site, but if it were a tough site, then either whether it was a lot, big site, or a small site, you know, if someone wants to build this site, I don't want to be building in this area. So you still got a tough area right here, you still have a tough area right here, and another tough area right here, which is a pretty good ledge out cross. So you can see the cuts we're making in order to get these buildings in for the ledge and that to take out. So either way, that site was tough to begin with. Obviously, it's going to be a lot smaller scale, it's going to have to be up in this area, you'll have to blast. We will make sure we have super subtil for that. I'm just trying to make sure I go through some of the concerns Ted had. And it's part of phasing, hopefully I addressed that a little bit. I don't know how the planners work, you know, normally handles those things, because a site's plan is usually good for two years? How does that work?
Well, I think if you phased it, if you gave us a phased plan, the planning board could approve a phased plan, it would be more than two years.
Okay.
Okay? That's why we were, that's why we were asking.
Phase one, you know, phase two, August 14, phase three, August of 2015 type thing.
Right. That would be fine, but it wasn't specified, so the planning board.
Yeah, I wasn't really sure what Paul's ideas were, and the guys to that, so that's something we surely can add to the plan.
And so we are going with an application for all of these improvements at this time.
I believe that's what we wanted to.
You want a full application for everything, okay, that's, that's the thing.
We talked about that a long time ago, you said if you're going to do it, you might as well lay it all out.
Do it all.
And come ahead in front of you guys and just see what everything we're looking at for the next three to four years, total work, and that's a lot of stuff right there.
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
But wouldn't we be better off, or wouldn't the applicant be better off if we did do a phased plan? Because there's, there's a longer timeline to work with.
Yes.
Because if we do it as a single plan now, you're locked into that plan, or you have to come back for revision. If you submit it as a phased plan, you have a longer timeline to work with.
And we would approve the plan as phased, which means, in other words, obviously, the, it would have a schedule to work, in which the applicant would have to complete the work within a specified time period. You can put that in the initial approval. Applicant will come, will complete all the, all the site improvements within five years, or three years, or whatever you want to put there, and if he sees that, then he has to come back. But, I mean, you're approving a phased plan, if he gets, you know, phase one done in two years, and he gets the other ones done in the specified phasing, whatever it is. You can do that.
But if, if it's submitted as a phased plan, we approve it as a phased plan, but if it's submitted as a single unphased plan.
He's got to do it in two years.
You've got to do it in two years, right, so that's, that's what I'm getting at.
I guess I'm not sure what the difference would be, if I.
Well, I think the difference is that if you give us a plan, it's that, we're going to do this.
Right.
And it's not a phased plan, you've got two years from the date of approval to finish it. If you say it's a phased plan, and we're going to take it until 2015 or 2016.
Saying phase three estimated construction start August 14.
Right, yeah, pretty much.
And then phase four estimated construction start August 2015. Total completion of the project 2017, or whatever we're saying.
Right. At least you're right to do that.
Yeah, so basically kind of the same plan, but, okay, so that's fine.
Now, with that, would they have to come back and stuff in front of the board for the future, the details of the future plan?
No, all the details will be approved now.
And it won't say, you know, it won't say, it won't say future, it's just a phase for the.
Subject change.
Right, similar to what we.
I would say if things change, we're going back in front of.
Right, you definitely. And if you do phasing, also, it lots you into physical changes in the ordinance. You're approved, they'll approve the whole site line.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
And that's our goal.
All right, Mr. Chairman, question. When did, if he tried to put something on a plan, and showing that for future expansion, and when did the time element go into effect?
If he puts a time element, if he says.
Yeah, but if he, I'm not saying it's approved for future development, but there was no time set up, and it was approved. There is no time element on it.
I don't believe there is, Marty.
You're asking.
No. I'm not sure about that, I, you know, I, you know, we're thinking of subdivision, guys.
I'm not.
I just want to check it, I want to check the site plan right now, to make sure, verify that permitted wire classification. This isn't flight plan, Paul, it's not conditionally used. We're so used to conditional use.
It was conditionally used.
This is a site plan. Request extension, application of one procedure, one assurances. Nope. All this one assurances, refund completion, review duration, there we go. Yeah, here's where it is, it is under, we did put a two-year on this. Uh, it's not, section 98I, duration of site plan approval. It says, site plan approval of all legal rights, privileges, and duties thereof shall be part of the project construction. Has not commenced within one year of the approval date, and if the project is not substantially completed within two years of the approval date, staff review committee may grant up to one year extension on administrative rules. And similarly, planning board may grant a one-year extension of site plan approval if compelling evidence is presented that additional time is required to meet federal, state, and or local permit requirements or in reaction to market changes. So, basically, um, but if you have a phased plan, I think that protects you from that two-year limit. Because you've approved it, assuming that it's going to go in these certain phases.
Doesn't the phased plan have to have some, some time setting?
We'll have to have deadlines, we'll have to have straight deadlines, obviously. In order to get an exemption from the two-year substantial completion.
Yeah.
We'll have to have that phasing, that's why I mentioned phasing up front, it's being really, actually a very important component. Not only for our consideration, but for your action.
Right, right.
Ted, I'm not necessarily opposed to a phased plan, it's not where my question is going, but is there that authority in the ordinance?
Well, it doesn't specify it specifically.
Correct.
It does not. But as you know, we have so many projects that are phased anyways.
And that's what I'm saying, I'm not opposed to it, I think it's smart to put a deadline on it, given, you know, he's got a lot that he's looking to do here. I just wanted to ask that question.
Well, is this different from seasonal cottages?
Yes. Seasonal cottages is a subdivision and a conditionally used term. We do not have time limitation or conditionally used. We do have limitation, subdivision, in terms of the substantial.
Smart condition.
Project. And that's what you were thinking, you know, and that's what I was thinking up too, and I forgot that we did in fact feel that, that we did not have two projects that just sit in and languish, you know, and tie up land and for extended period of times. They're not going to, if they don't have the capability to do it, then come back when you do. Now, Jamie brings up a good point, that says, the project is not substantially completed within two years substantial completion.
Ambiguous.
This is ambiguous, and I think that's where you're, that's where the wiggle.
Oh, but he's still, I'm still only have three years maximum.
Right.
Or substantially, isn't it, like fifty percent or something?
However you decide.
Substantially is not defined, Paul.
Yeah.
It's not, or is it fifty percent's not necessarily substantial, it could be seventy percent, it could be eighty percent. And that's why I like the idea of phasing, because phasing in the planning board and the applicant agree that we're going to meet these timelines. And as such, then we can give a complete approval. The other way to do it is.
Get approval for this, and then get approval for the, you know, the other two cold storage buildings.
And the question is, will things change in between, Ken?
Well, which I can argue, say we defined frame here, two years, plus a year extension will still work.
Yeah, you said fifteen, right?
Right, so 2015.
Well, if everything goes according.
Well, if market conditions change, that's extra fluff.
Right.
So that's why. Phasing, right?
Well, I think you could do that with a phased.
Okay.
If he says we'll be completing four, this is phase one, this will be completed in one year or two years. This is phase two, this will be completed in four years. I think, I think the planning board has some other to do with it. And that would be reasonable, especially when we're dealing with larger build outs, larger properties. And this, frankly speaking, is kind of designed for the smaller property, or two uses. This is a complex that, that Paul's developing here.
If he decides in three years that he's not going to go through, he has to come back and change his plan, right?
He has to, well, either, or he lets it expire, or expires.
If it expires, then obviously, if nothing's changed in the ordinance, it's a specific exact thing when, but we.
But let's say Hobbitt is done, let's say he does the, the first part.
Correct.
And in two or three years, he says, you know what, I'm not going to do the storage, the two dry storage buildings. If he stops, then the plan on record still shows two storage buildings, but there really isn't that. So don't you have to mitigate that, you've got to make sure that something gets updated to show that it isn't exactly what's there?
Well, we would probably, and this is a subject we're probably discussing in the planning review, is what to do on projects that fail. And the planning board does have an obligation to, to make a proclamation over to Alfred to notify the registry of deeds and the assessor that the project is, is not going forward. It's no longer, it's no longer viable.
Right, and don't, at that point, shouldn't the applicant submit an as-built plan?
Uh, we, yes.
Really?
You don't, I, no, we debated as-belts on this, you guys were not necessarily enthused with as-belts.
Well, no, but if the project has failed, then you've got to have some record of what's there.
Yes.
Well, but, but that's something that, if the project fails, we can notify county, and we can notify the assessor. This project failed, this was not done.
But it's a fail.
And so the plan is no longer valid, and you can't do anything, you have to come back to the planning board to proceed from that point.
But this has a subdivision component to it, which is really what, what the courthouse cares about, is the subdivision. That's going to be subdivided when this plan is approved. Whether those two storage buildings get constructed or not, the registry of deeds, as I understand it, don't care. So, but the lot, but the lot is still there, and the lot is still on record, always will be unless the owner decides to change something. So whether the buildings get built or not, you know, I think that's where we can deal with it in the phase and say, you know, the two, two future buildings will be constructed by a specific date proposed by the applicant, agreed to by the board, and if they're not constructed by that time, then they've got to come back in front of the planning board for approval.
Right, exactly. And since this is single ownership, I don't have to worry. If this was rentals, or leases, then we might have a little bit of problem. But we don't have it, there's no further subdivision, aside from the two lots, there's no condoizing of the space in there, so there's no reason, you're absolutely right, there's no reason why the registry of deeds gets involved in this.
My guy, he's right, actually. This would be a level thing, where, you know, two years expired, or whatever, and then doesn't come back, there's extension. And loses his right to build this, going back on the board, meeting new requirements to do what is.
Might have, right? Might just be a little bit, I want to get re-approved. Right, right.
But, you know, we'll phase it, and hopefully, language is touched by the board, and that'll get back in the board, we just try and frame it, try to make it work.
Good point. Uh, regarding the subdivision, do you agree with that?
I, I have no idea why I was in the body back then. I just assumed that they ran on, on the thing that before, you slide it to the grid or something.
No, it was a two-lot subdivision.
Yeah.
Would you turn that around? I've got a question on that. Could you have the gravel drive extension coming up to that future building?
Yes.
And then the future gravel down here? Are you going to make that sort of a gravel?
This is all existing gravel?
Yeah.
It's all existing now.
I just didn't want to shade it again.
So this is all existing gravel, right, this is all existing gravel, this is all existing gravel. So, you know, obviously the cars, the community, fully, uh, if I drew the boats, they're coming in, bringing the boats in.
So you're just showing what's going to be constructed now.
Correct.
Just.
I can shade it just to give you the meaning, and maybe they appreciate them from that, changing this to a future, and that's perfect, you know? But yeah, this is all, as you see, edge of gravel, right here, edge of gravel, what they didn't have with the pond, this is edge of gravel, this is edge of gravel. This is all gravel right now.
You have to have a ballpark idea how much blasting you're going to be doing?
I don't think we've looked at prices for this yet, but.
How deep the ledge is?
Yeah, we have pretty, this is like, one foot pond, so we thought, you know, two, six foot, fourteen foot cot right here.
One's your place, it's all right.
I'll get it. But no, I don't, I mean, I can certainly calculate it, you know, pond, you know.
You know, but that material's all going offsite, right?
No.
That's the reason I asked the question.
On the blasting part of it, I met with Andy Pickard, actually, a couple of days ago. Probably, I like to bring up, first of all, there was another subdivision, the Gelati, the Gelati brothers bought several pieces of property years ago on Route 1, and they had those Lindolce's homes that they'd planted there, for the idea of selling and making money. And originally, my brother and I bought two lots from them. We bought one lot, the original lot and that lot, and we, you know, had a package to give them both lots. And that's how we bought the property. The next door to us is another Lindolce's home, where Trident's Bar and Shop is. And next door to that is another Lindolce's home, that is a property's home, and next to that, you've got, that was the Deagle's Club. The Eagles Club, that's a Lindolce's home. They were in the process of branching out, and they bought that tract of land, they divided it into, you know, certain sized lots. And when my brother and I bought that, you know, that maybe five, eight, six, five, whoever it is, maybe, that, we bought two separate lots under our names at that time.
Yeah, I just say subdivision, because the planning board approved as a subdivision.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's been two, it's been more than five years, I don't think the planning board has any jurisdiction over the subdivision on this property outside of its functionality, in regard to it.
I just kind of like to point out, say, you know.
Appreciate that.
We wanted, I don't know if we still do, record a U subdivision plot?
Yes. But you're still going to have to record that lot, because that's not the same lot, you're going to have to give the.
Yeah. So I'm just going to make it a simple official. This is what, we'll record the registry, the registry doesn't see future buildings, in my opinion, it just makes it cashing against a terrible survey, because a lot of time you can't get it clear on the land. So I'm just going to show the divisional common line, the new line, and the posting is expected in July. You know, we talked about that also, because Ted did bring up a point, as far as catching on this site. You can see the green line really showed too well, that's the edge of my, you know, forty-foot, uh, access. So that, and I look at, that comes right down pretty much, it's just a new square that's created. So I said, I said, well, you know, if I did, part of that right down to a square that's created, but we'll, we'll have to confirm.
Uh, what size lot is that, that you're going to be creating there?
A new one?
Yes.
It should say on.
Yeah, it says new, it's going to be forty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two feet. I didn't catch that, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will put it on this plan also. So it's open, you know, it's out, and, so that was one of Ted's concerns about, you know. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There it is, it's that one. No, that's the.
Getting, getting back to the cut that you're doing for the blasting, that's going to have to go offsite, right?
Well. Well, I don't want to address that, I haven't, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, okay?
That's right.
We're going to actually, that back lot, what we're going to do is that, we're going to get into the project, we blast the front area. We're using all of the granite, we're going to crush it up to make our own base. We're going to use it to make our own road, it's going to be a very good binding gravel. And then the larger stuff that's not broken up, we're going to raise that back lot up, come uphill, because I don't want to take all of that off the top. So we're going to come uphill with that.
The back lot.
With the back lot. We use some of that fill to come up, you know, the back area here. I don't want trucks on the road, I don't want my fill that I own, going to someone else's lot, I'm going to keep it on a property, and we're going to use it to, you know, to develop that secondary area at a later date.
Hard to hear?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I, I think the question is, when, when you're done with four phases, or whatever you are, any excess materials will be hauled off to something?
Right, well, it's going to be printed to a building, it's going to be gravel.
Right, so I mean, you're not just going to come over and create a huge.
You've got a gravel mound, and even if it's in years, right? No, but the deal that we talked, I just said earlier, Andy Pickard and I talked, actually, a couple of days ago, that when we get it all done, the difference of the material will be hauled off to the pit or whatever, and something they can use for gravel roads and base average, whatever you need to do.
Pretty much.
You have to balance the test, though. So yeah, I think, what Paul's saying, exactly, what Paul's saying is, we're not going to haul it all back in. We're going to process it, use everything that we need to use, whatever is, uh, extras involved, so. That's the point you bring up, they want to try to block, use all of the gravel and sell it, probably, which is probably not a bad idea, but.
Marty's got a question?
Yes.
Uh, with the different phases, where we have the, the new building out back there, up, 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 out there, so.
That's existing.
That one is existing now.
That's existing, these two colors are existing.
Correct, but when you're turning, coming into your swing on your new entrance, right? Do we have, do you have enough for there to turn out to bring out your folks? I mean, that's why I'm just.
Yeah, no, we, me and Paul talked, they got thirty feet, set back thirty feet from two buildings right now. Yeah, no, we, me and Paul talked, they got thirty feet, set back thirty feet from two buildings right now. I certainly will make sure I can run, I guess, the truck control, truck apparatus between coming down here so that they can actually access. That's why I'm asking for off site, so.
I just want you to foot radius, that's the problem, forty-two foot radius on that ladder truck. And that's what I'm wondering is from.
You got a forty-two foot turn around there?
It's forty-two, yeah, it's forty-two outside wheel.
Oh, outside wheel.
It's an outside wheel. But the problem is that you're, the nature of, I had a meeting with Fire Chief Holden.
Okay, good.
And he would like to walk the site, assuming the planning board is going to walk the site, do a sidewalk quickly. He would like to accompany us because he has another question. He says he has concerns on how he's going to.
Right.
He wants to preplan this and he's got some concerns. His concern is to propose, what I would say, your boat building facility there, Paul, and how that constrits that trainway, he's got a lot, a lot of concerns about that.
Yeah.
He's going to have to, in order to fight, if you were to, God willing, this never happens, but if you were to have a fire in there, he's only going to be able to do this by aerial apparatus. Because there's not really a lot of room and maneuver around this, and I don't think he's going to send guys, if you've got a real structure fire.
So I understand that that last building we put in there, years ago, we used to actually do complete boat buildings and stuff like that. I'm looking at later on in the world, you know, what I'd like to do is get back into building, you know, larger customized boats.
That'd be great.
As things move forward in our life. And so if we took that same side building and relocated it on the backside of this lot, or, you know, next to the other buildings that's existing right now, find a way to appease your coves and stuff. I don't have a problem if we take that and stick it down in that open area to do that, because it gives me more than enough room to get in and out. Then it'd actually be, if we took this building right here and swam it from here down into here, that would give you more room to, you know, to operate.
Maneuver.
Yeah.
With your cranes and everything else.
Again, if we put this here, and just put it right here, right there, I got plenty of room to get up into here and it still keeps out all open. This is not, when we talked about future, this is like away from here, you know what I mean? I want to put everything up there that I want to do, so when I come back here, if I have to come back with something, you're going to say, well, you should have done that a long time ago. These are things that I would like to do. This here is a must, these here, this project here is paying for that project there right now. We filmed that, I already have a waiting list for other people, this is full. So the idea is, is that the money generated from here is making the money to pay for this project here. This here is going to put the fluff in my pocket to keep people going later on during winter months. That's all I'm doing, I'm just trying to go into this, into that. When that happens, I have to do this to help pay for that. When that's done, pretty much that's where I'm going to be in the whole project, but these buildings are paying for themselves right now.
And you say there, those buildings are dry storage?
That, all this is a big empty building.
Yep.
And it's no heat, it's a dry storage building, that's all it is. I put boats in there, we cover them with lake plastic, I would wash them for the winter time. And then when people get them, this year, we put in this winter, kept the cold fruit going, always along with work. I mean, it was a plus. That's going to allow me to afford with the banks that see the money income to do this next project, to get rid of places dumpy looking. I want to make it a premier boat yacht. And by doing this here, it's going to do that in time. And when this project gets done, the bank they're already talking to right now, so they, they see the potential of storage buildings, we've already got a waiting list. They want me to continue on the next building. Because that's where the income is, that is a solid year round income.
Do you fill that year round? That's not just.
I get some storage in there now.
Now, is that just on the slab or do you have any racks?
No, just the gravel, it's a fresh rock bottom.
No, but no racks, no multi?
No, I don't want that. We go in and out of there with, you know, with a hydraulic trailer, putting thirty-five foot boats in there. The key to it is being able to go in there and descend down and leave. If you go with a rack storage system, you've got to buy a very expensive piece of equipment and the racks are, it puts it out of my price range. You know what? What we're doing is, that guy's paying for that guy, that guy's paying for that guy, it's a domino thing. But it's a helping spot to be in right now.
You know, we need to spend a whole lot of time, you know, Paul just say, well, I'd like to see another building, you have a boat storage building, that's kind of where you want it. I know there's still grading issues, there's turning issues, but, you know, one of the last minute things, I would say, well, let's put it on here so we can discuss it. Don't look at it, make sure the fire truck can either make those degrees, either move this thing back. That's why I don't do that. So I'm not, you can see, I just parked in, so all I wanted made it this size and my drainage field's still, and my driveway's coming right to it. So obviously it was kind of a lot of this type thing.
Yeah, a lot of trains going through it.
Yeah, there are, you know, a lot of complications, which are pretty good, really, you know? So, you know, we'll certainly look at that and make sure that we know, that the fire department has questions. And listen to body a lot of concerns, I don't know if he's going to be okay with just accessing the building like it is. If, I mean, if there's issues, you know, maybe I'll have to have a driveway, I don't know. I hope not, but, you know, we'll talk to him and see whatever issues are.
Yeah, I mean, he's going to have a tough time protecting exposure. One building goes, the other one's going to go up too, because there's no.
Domino pack.
Well, he can't, he can't protect that exposure, and that's like a New York City exposure right there. But you have twenty, ten feet between them?
You know, we can't see what scales this theory, so maybe fifteen?
Fifteen feet.
Yeah, right now? So, you know, it's not impossible, I guess, to move it and give it a little bit more separation and, you know.
Costly, we got a lot more blast damage.
You know? But yeah, but it's more gravel than part of it.
Is there, is there any fire protection inside the building, sort of sprinklers or something?
Well, it's just for storage, you can write.
Right. And that, that opens a whole different kind of works. It's not only heat, probably want to do a wet system, don't want it to dry system.
Yeah.
That side is a dry system.
So, you know, what, what, to buy, to buy, as you can see, what his, some drivers have and the rest of them. So I can't.
Don't they, don't they have sprinkler systems that the fire department hooks up on the outside of the building?
That's the supplement, the initial pit. You have usually a tank where you have direct, direct from the main, from the channel inside water here, which, which goes directly to the sprinklers, but if there's an interruption in that, the fire, it's called the fire department connection, sprinkling connection, they, they will hook up a four inch hose to that and heat it. But you've got a main right there, it's much, if, if you were to sprinkle this, you bring in the main, because it's a twenty inch main.
Well, yeah, but you, you want to avoid heating the building, so you only want to do it if you've got a problem.
Right.
But you still need supplement.
Tell you honestly, by the time you get there and get it set up with the type of construction you got there.
We didn't done that.
You've got that fuel load going in there, that's, that's an amazing fuel that you're going to have there. You have, you have fuel in the tanks of those, of the.
Oh, oh, yeah.
So it's all fire regardless of you. You've got.
I didn't realize.
You're getting tangled in sprinklers, we're going to have full tanks keeping on. The thing with this is that there's, there's nothing in there, it's storage, it's bare walls in there, it's just gravel, every fresh rock floors. You park them in there, you leave them there, you know, we don't work on the boats in these buildings at all, we just don't.
Do you pull them out to work on them?
We pull them out, so they're all done by date. You've got to put them in on their launch dates expected. So when you put them in, you get their winter works lined up, you know, to do your stuff, you grab the boats that are ready to go in to get working on this stuff, but you don't work, I mean, it's cold, I'm not going to put your eyes out there and freeze. The work we do is with your fingers and stuff. We don't do fiberglass work, we don't do paint work. It's something, we are mechanical boat yacht, basically. We went through this DEP thing and Safe Works Main and all this other stuff. And the older stuff about, we don't do that purposely because I don't want to have to qualify to do that type of work, there's so much to it. And I have mechanics, we don't have fiberglass people, I'm thinking of Stacy Raymond in Bitterford, and I haven't done much, but he does a lot about fiberglass work. So we have a minimum, you can come to my shop anytime, we have a minimum amount of any type of flammable material to stay within the Safe Works guides of name that they want. And, and then we just went through an insurance audit last month, that was fine. But because we've done all of, and we do these classes at the shop, the Safe Works Main, the Safe Works Main is that when they did the audit, the guy walked in and walked out and said, you know, this is one of the fewest places I've ever been in. But we have a safety officer to keep up with that stuff. So we are proactive in that type of things. And even storage buildings, we're pulling my ad right now, every building has several fire steamers on the front, and in the buildings they're loaded with fire steamers. In the storage building and all the other shops, they have a plan, and we've worked with, with Lindsay Fire, Davis Rain, it's our physical, and they come in and they load the place up purposely for that reason. I've been there, don't want to do that again, costs us thousands of dollars. So we've invested in the fire protection system, and the guy's been trained in fire suppression, they had plastic for that as well. You've got to do that stuff, you've got to educate them to stay healthy.
So we'll start with the fire issue, definitely come back, you know?
Another question?
Yes. With the new chief and whatever else that most of us probably don't know, what is his goals or questions for the standards that we've had before on fire hydrants along Route One? Is that something that should be addressed so we can keep a standard or what?
The chief is evaluating that right now. In fact, he asked, one of the first questions is, where's my water supply here? And it's, what, seventeen?
Seventeen.
Hundred and fifty-five.
Sixteen, hundred, sixteen hundred and fifty-five feet away. He said, ooh, we're laying some hose, we're going to pump some things too. So the issue is then, you know, yeah, that was one of the questions that he asked, is we're going to develop this business area. We're going to need more fire protection than we've got right now. But has he come up with a plan yet? No, he's still in the process of building his department and dealing with a lot of different issues. He is looking at the, he's trying to do preplanning, which is, he's interested in this, he's looking at preplanning on assaults on, on larger buildings or some problem buildings or problem structures to make sure that they have a plan in place if anything goes wrong. And he is also looking at the future complements of equipment and fire protection, but there's a lot of catch up to do. And fire hydrant locations, I've given him identification of where a lot of them are at this point. And also the issue of, of how we, how we're going to address, I've already addressed, told him about that problem that we have right now with our ISO standards and how those are somewhat, they are somewhat, they're oppressive standards. They're very, very expensive standards, and he agrees that we have to reevaluate that. That's going to take some planning, that's on the horizon, but he's not, he's not to that point yet.
Yeah, only reason, I know because, I'm asking this, because when we had the new building put up, it was different or anything else, but with something of this nature of building up, being larger and everything else, and protect your, your values, sort of, that's why I'm asking about the thousand feet or whatever he deems. I mean.
Well, there's no question a thousand feet is going to really hinder any kind of fire suppression on site. And we'll tell you that without doubt, because if you've got to lay basically amounts of about two thousand feet of hose, you're going to undump your entire, your entire L V H out of the back, it's going to take time to set up a water supply. And, you know, in that first couple of minutes when you arrive, if it's, if it's rocking and rolling in there, you've only got two thousand gallons to deal with, less than a minute, two minutes maybe. And so, yeah, there, there is an exposure, there's a probable fire suppression there, it takes time to set up a water show. You guys do your ISO test yet?
They did.
They passed?
They did not.
They did not pass a whole?
Because the instructor only allowed one truck at a time. You couldn't fill that truck until it had left and gone to another site. But when they did it in Bitterford, they used a couple of different sites to fill from.
I see, okay, well, back to the drawing board.
Anyway, I would just think it through so that we could try to address.
It's an issue that the planning board needs to address, and I thank you, Marty, for always being on that, because that's very important. And the chief is aware of it, and if we are going to get aggressive with business development along an entire Route One quarter and Route One eleven quarter, we have to look at one of the principal issues is going to be fire protection itself. But the chief would like, assuming we are going to sidewalk, because we do have members who have not been out there, and we haven't been on that part of the site before, I assume we're going to do a sidewalk. And the chief wants to accompany us and talk to you gentlemen directly and the planning board, and do a little bit of brainstorming about the situation, so you can come up with a decent preplan to protect your property. So that's, that's, that's a nice issue, is that we always have, having to have a fire chief on our sidewalks before, I don't sure.
Question for our sidewalk, then, do we have an idea where all these are going to be? Either Paul doesn't need or to stake out where these future futures.
Well, I already did stake out there.
I think it should be.
I did this corner, and that corner, and that corner.
Okay.
You're going to do some climbing.
I already did stake out the first front corner.
Well, if we're going to approve a plan, I think it should be staked out.
Yeah, because you won't see it again.
Yeah, I mean, so, I don't know if you want to go and stake.
Well, I just, I.
You know, I can, but.
I, I don't really know if the lock corner serves as important as the location or just your service.
Yeah, I think, I'm sure, I'm sure the beginning, you can pretty much have a traverse, they assume probably, you know, so I give you a pretty good idea with these a lot.
Thank you, Paul.
So I don't, I don't think that's as important.
You know, that, that part of the corner's in, that pin's in, so you have a pretty good, we're at it all times, you know, so I don't think.
No, I didn't mean to go climbing through the woods.
Well, we're on, we're on to discuss the sidewalk, do I have a motion for sidewalk?
Make a motion for a sidewalk, second meeting in August? The first one? First one be enough, okay. I just wanted to make sure Paul had enough time.
Yeah, I already said, right, seven, three, it's our chief line.
Okay, so I make a motion for the first, the first meeting in August, which is, is it the eighth?
Yeah. First and third day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One favor?
One question, what time? That's like before we leave.
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
You make that, Marty?
Yeah, that's easier.
Why not? I would think.
It's not, it's not very dense in there. It's pretty easy walk to say, you're too.
It's just, it's a problem.
Coffee and donuts are good.
You'll have the first phase staked out too?
That would be early.
Well, actually, that's going to be kind of difficult.
Oh, yeah, that too.
You know, I mean, it's pretty easy to tell, you see it existing, you can kind of tell what it's have, but I can really, you know, I think you have a pretty good idea.
I think if you're there, it'd be helpful to see, have a stake to know where the centerline of the road was. Up near the, yeah, near the railway to give us an idea.
Yeah.
We actually, I'll pretty simply powerball here, so we keep the powerball.
However, we can, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Either that or get your fluorescent paint.
That's on, I can pick your powerball. Set a point right here, we might need a little for the, not being a mark, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions before we close on this.
Yep.
Paul, regarding the, certainly have a lot one, and it has no place to drain. Are you going to size those facilities for, for that kind of?
My thought project for lot one is that be sold, or generate some more income. That probably only was going to be responsible for maintaining dumps of stormwater, there was a dent upon, handle his little project. But I will look at some sort of output for the gentleman's, at least it is meant to get back to who's saving lives, shooting, right? I'll look at some sort of use or something in developing a pond, they're making the flows, they'll have a place for discharge.
Because right now they don't. And your project will eliminate any.
Right now, and then this charge goes into a different ditch.
They go into that ditch.
Yep.
To our pond. Right, that's the natural flow.
Correct.
And that, that would be, and the problem with the shared driveway, that situation, so then we've got a situation where in order for him to do his project, he has to come and pause there and make, make. Somebody got a situation where in order for him to do his project, he has to come and pause there and make, make expansions.
No, if I give, if I give this lot, the drainage unit, some sort of drainage unit to this wetland, however I wanna do that, when he brings this lot and does his stormwater, puts his pipe on it on his property, he'll be able to flow it across and probably might act as three imposed other flow conditions. And then I'll make sure that he can discharge somewhere above the site. So this, the lot will come in for their own stormwater. And I'm gonna try to fill seventy percent, try to loop it out and build a pump that side. That side will be, like I had a site, you know, this is what you got. So we're talking planning board, do your stormwater account, do your pre- and post-account, do your post account. Find out whether the water is really running. You've got a couple of options, the water does run, you know, down into this area, you know, and does run down this area.
Oh, you're running it all.
But I will figure out some sort of, at least handle that drainage, you know, the water in the site.
Paul?
So it'll be easier to get it out.
Yeah, well, if you want to solve the problem, you're gonna have to.
Yes, absolutely.
Otherwise, it's a waste of power.
Very good point, I would definitely look at that.
And Paul?
Yes.
You might try to do it so that when, when he comes, you, you already have half the debt already that you're...
I can charge him twice as much.
Yeah.
I like what you think. Um, so stormwater maintenance, very good points I brought up, you know, I was thinking it's gonna be a self-contained lot, it's like any other lot. You maintain pre- and post-own for them, figure out where your...
So in this case, the water, you know, drains, you have to have, not with like some of the here, you have to make sure you're not increasing pre- and post-own flows on any joint or property, but we'll get to something more than that so that it can, you know, have these methods, these discharge. They're not gonna be a cross problem on the right. So keep their structure on their property, develop the property. So go look at that. I guess I would like to keep on doing this parking. This project is a nightmare, so it's parking concern. Paul, you know, obviously, how many, how many customers do you have a day maximum at any one time, three?
Well, you know what, you mean park all at one time, it's not like, it's not like a supermarket. It's like you get a couple of people in the morning, you might get a couple at noon time, at lunch hour, and then you might get a couple before you go home. I mean, we're, we work on boats, people leaving here, take someone to pick them up and they leave, they're not...
Not even, it might be delivery.
Yeah, well, most of, most of our customers, well, about sixty percent we deliver. We just sell them built, so the majority of that is not even, we don't have a lot of people coming in and out of there to do business with. And most of our stuff is we deliver the boats, we pick them up, we move away. Kind of a specialty brick business. But as far as people coming in, uh, for an abundance of weight, I don't know, I think that most people ever had in that place were maybe five or six at a time, but most people ended, paid that bill, picked the boat up on Saturday morning and they're out of there, you know? But the parking situation where he's got there is actually more than that, but now it was shown.
And so, you know, I guess I would like to know is these existing buildings are the bulk storage? Like in the warehouses?
Both are just warehouses. Well, I'm really only concerned about the retail area and not the...
Start off by any warehouses, because look at your warehouse, it's one space with five hundred square feet.
This is a ten thousand square foot.
Ten thousand square foot.
I didn't even calculate how many parking spaces that is.
Well, wait, wait, Paul. The parking spaces. Paul, there's parking spaces inside.
Wow.
Warehouse thing. And so I started thinking about how to do that, I said, I need to talk with, and you brought it up too, and I wanna talk with, it's like a nightmare.
How many employees?
And then if you look at five of them, honey.
And you have plans. Yeah. So the issue is how to do the customers and I, I would really wanna do it based on, I, I really wanna do it based on retail area. That would be retail.
So that's not bad, I would say the retail area is probably two thousand square feet.
Right.
You know?
That's each basis.
Right. So no, I, I'll know what you can remember by, because then if I start talking about, if you call that building a repair building, I think that's one space with two hundred and fifty square feet. And that goes in, this building's twenty-eight hundred. And I'd get a hundred parking spaces for this place.
You know, the retail area is gonna act almost as...
So I don't know.
A palace of oil that we use, you know what I mean, something like that, so we buy, make, you know, the palace of oil and a product that we sell and stuff like that. You know, we have a garage door on the far end of what we, what we call a retail area to bring in our pallets and stuff.
I'm not gonna call that retail, I'm gonna call, where everybody comes in, like your showroom, your small motorboats and...
The light chargers and the piles and...
Yes.
The, the, the...
Which is kinda like the right idea.
The fifty, two hundred dollar items, they're, they're small stuff.
Reasonable.
I mean, it's...
There's a little beam.
Yeah. It's off.
I can attest, but I think there are numerous occasions, you know, when you get a parts, you know, for light boat. Two, maybe three cars max, I can, in the morning, people inside the office, I mean, go in, pick up our parts or he's got a little shopping, you know, whatever, but you're in, you're out.
Now, here's with, with the proposed retail area, which is bigger. Will that create, you think it, of course, I know you don't have your crystal ball. Tarek, do you think that's gonna increase more volume, Tarek, needed, I mean...
I don't know, because I'll tell you what, we've got, you know, we, we have that little dumpy store there, but we got, now we gotta split it. We got three pounds of stuff and, uh, you know, we got ten pounds of stuff in a three pound bag right now. And by the time you spread that stuff out, it's gonna eat up all our room, but there's only so many customers in the area. There's only so many boats, I mean, if, if that was the case, we would be up to our ears in transient customers every day. I don't see that it's gonna actually grow that much more in retail. The only thing is just cleaning up, we have places to put our stuff.
Well, your retail is coming from your clientele that's going to...
Yeah, most of the stuff we take out and put on the post.
Yeah.
In the five. I mean, do you have those...
Now, by, by your eight spaces for your retail, uh, for your retail store?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. What you got marked out there, Paul?
Eight for the customer parking and I got, uh, uh, seven customer parking and four for employees.
I mean, you got five, uh, five for your employees and, uh, you know, I mean, eight and five is thirteen, yeah, roughly, yeah.
I mean, you know, I can certainly...
Of course, of course, it also too, you're taking your truck back and forth to, to the building up here, you don't need to park it down there.
Yeah.
I would handle parking this way, the board can tell me what you think. If you want to refer to page seventy-three, which is section seven-six C three G, which is the chart on parking.
Right.
And given the nature of this, um, you know, and, and how these facilities are all being really used by the employees, um, and it's really based on employee numbers more than anything else. I would base it on industrial businesses for employee, which is basically one space per employee based on maximum working shift. Um, and then the other, I would base it on retail.
Okay.
I think that would... Does the board have a problem with that? That seems to be...
Okay, you're right.
Uh, that's page, uh, seventy-three.
Yeah.
That seems to be justifiable and defensible and reasonable approach to determining parking. Because I, 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 retail shop, repair shop, just, I don't know where that came from. I don't, I think that's an APU.
That's why I need to break down for you that I'm going, I don't, I gotta stop right here.
I had, usually do a little breakdown.
Yeah, this one was there.
I was surprised by that.
We have one, for retail, one space for ten fifty is not unusual.
No, that's standard.
So, that's right.
So...
So figure out how much retail space they're gonna need.
Right.
I mean, and I would imagine they've got space around this facility to get another couple of parking spaces.
If they need to.
To dilute it out if we need to.
You know, I guess I can certainly show them some more additional parking, but, you know, obviously if I showed this parking and you just both there...
Well, let's put it that way. There's people, there are people who go to retail who don't know where to park, even if you give them the large park.
Yeah. So that's our problem, I'll count it the retail area and I'll count the number of employees, you know, and if it adds a few more parking spaces, I'll, I'll make sure I argue with them. Like I said, stock because we've got a little bit of...
If anyone's next week.
April five or thirteen.
Retail is gonna be less than the yellow that you have.
Right.
Portions.
Yeah, if you look at, I gave you a building layout plan. Obviously, there's a floor where...
This has some...
So, I'm just...
It's gonna have a...
So we reuse the entrance, so I'm not, that's not a D or a retail.
Sorry. And this is just...
Right.
My guys park pretty much sometimes right in front of the shop. Yeah. I mean, they park in front of the shop, they park up that, they park right above.
Yeah. Paul, this is just basically to meet the standards of the ordinance.
Yeah.
And that, that's what this is for. How are you dealing with that? I mean, our, really, our primary concern is ensuring that there's adequate parking. Especially for your customer base, and they aren't jamming up the intersection, they aren't parking on the side of your driveway, they aren't jamming up the, uh, the entrance.
Parking on the line?
You know, places that, that could cause the safety hazard. Make sure that you have adequate space to be able to meet your customers. So we're, we're concerned about, about the safety decision.
Well, yeah, I think...
I certainly have more spaces, you know, in this area if I want to...
But that sort of leaves itself, I mean, lends itself to my standpoint from really looking at moving that future building, that small one right in the middle of the site.
Yes, yes.
Because, you know, you can see somebody coming in with, with a trailer, they come on, hit, hit through that gravel road and then all of a sudden you've got open parking lot for them to get in, maneuver, get out of the way.
Yeah.
And do, you know, not be a public nuisance.
Put it down by the side of the existing store building. I don't care where it goes, I'd like to have the ability, I'm willing to date to, to build that for that reason. That is my last thing that I wanna put up.
It'd be good to have a, a little boat building.
So I think I'm okay with stormwater maintenance, I send it out, I'm fine with that, you know, um...
You're not going to DEP, right?
No, as far as, I, I have, remember our rules, I already made a rule.
Okay, good.
So I sent the app back at the DEP and it gets the information, you want to kinda know basically, uh, cover letter to DEP, I filled out the application, sent them the, the entire site plan. Basically, any previous area that was created prior to November sixty-two thousand and five doesn't count in the previous area.
Which is most solid.
That's right, yeah. And so, you know, when I, then I went through all the calculations, uh, telling them what we're doing and telling them what's going on and, uh, we did trigger over an acre of disturbed area so that, and by that's an acre, new impervious area, so qualified for a PBR pervert stormwater. Sent that in over fourteen days ago, I had to return receipt, uh, stamped, so it's been over fourteen days. And, uh, never heard back from them at all. Uh, got the DOT construction entrance print approved, these calls are already called it, so DOT's already now been approved, the, uh, uh, new location of entrance, so that's already been approved and included. Uh, so it's just a matter of obviously let's try to set up by some of the other issues. Landscaping, um...
Paul, let's do the landscaping.
You know, uh, I guess, um, we pretty much tried to cock and cap the county connection.
You just put a wall in?
No, no, it's not, the trees, the trees, the tree spacing.
But the trees are good because they...
You know, I had cock and catted that because I'm not a landscape expert, I talked to Paul, I said, you know, you don't want something? I think, you know, propose, what was proposed for county connection? You know, quite frankly, you know, we got fifty-foot green bushes for the pier instead of twenty-five. I'm surprised Paul wants about fifty, and I'm glad he did, it works for me, and it sure works for you guys. But, you know, we're gonna maintain fifty-foot lawn area instead of twenty-five required. Again, you know, we're planting similar type of trees that county connection, so when you go by county connection, that's the kind of look we're gonna have with trees. Um, you know, and then same thing on the side, that's the exact same thing that county connection had, I'm gonna have to reuse and say they don't grow up very high, you know, the bottom of the plant, and I do, but that's what we're proposing right now. I guess, you know, potentially maybe because this is bulk storage, you know, we might have a little bit more head and studio buffering, you know, or in that area.
That's what we're gonna go with.
There we go. So, you know, Paul's in response to, well, geez, I like that build to have, uh, I don't want these things hidden from view so we're protection and greatness and vandalism, but we're sure that we'll, we'll just cut that with the sidewalk.
I don't think they'll be, they're never gonna be hidden. They're not, they're gonna be very visible. I mean, especially during the winter time, you do your storage, Paul, and you're gonna be folding trees. You're gonna see right through the trees.
Right. So we'll talk about landscaping.
And they, and you know, actually the other place, this is actually a better application because it's got a wide tree lawn here.
Right.
Um, you've got shallow to bed rock, and you've got, you've got the combination random soils.
Right.
Wind and, you know, shallow.
This is a shallow root system, so...
This is a shallow root system.
Okay, I saw you say that, that's kind of...
So this is actually a pretty good application in this situation.
Good, good to know. So, I mean, we're gonna...
Might have, you actually pull it back a little further from your, which is not working so.
Yep. I would certainly do that, I've been putting some really dead smack, it wasn't his first twenty-five feet.
Well, take a look out there, we'll, we'll see.
And, uh, I think, you know, where everything else is, I've got the show the water line, I did have it, but we're actually tapping in the existing water line to the building to bring it in.
Yeah, where is it?
Probably a different way it's gone on here.
Okay.
Uh, the water is tapped in the existing water and we're bringing it from the building.
And you're septic.
Septic with the music. So the septic is a good question, Paul said it's a thousand gallon tank, a twenty-by-forty bed, um...
We stuck the bed, uh, any thick guy, nine included, we double-checked some stuff. We, we stuck the bed, filled it with a rod, we did some measuring on it and stuff like that.
I mean, it surely doesn't look like there's any failure whatsoever in that bed. It doesn't look like it's any type of failure.
What you gonna do, put a pump system, right?
Yeah, you're gonna force it. Because, uh, the building I'm proposing is a little bit lower camera than your business there, up there. And so, you know, the ground's gonna be rocky, so we're gonna distract the constation.
Slender pump?
Yeah.
Let's see what that is, let's see what that means. So it's pretty...
And water.
The septic field is right there, it's right around that, that's where the septic tank is here.
Just in that area is where I can...
Yep. The server.
Yeah.
Well, you're creating an after-reserve flow if you need to, and you got, uh, to worry about gravity. Why would you have to? Not, not to a building or a tank.
So, um, did any other questions? I've got the answer, but I think...
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm still looking at the lighting.
Oh, yes, and Paul said he'll get you some clearer...
Would you please give me some...
Yeah, Kim Goulet has that stuff, he's wanna give you the original copy. The lights I don't wanna put in, uh, they're not, they're not, they're not an invasive light, it's an LED system.
Yeah.
I took the state of Maine on a lot of these extra money things, they give you that. And what they do is they're just like the door, uh, where you're coming in, they're LED shaded and they give you a very small footprint, there's no light pollution going out.
Yeah.
I like those, it peeked around all the time. The parking lot would be, the front parking lot will have a couple of those out there. The, the height of the light, it gives you the dimension out of the light, as you look at the plants. But over each door will have one of those non-invasive lights over, the LED light, it's a shade, it's all shaded back through the building.
Yeah, I think I showed you, you know, the B.
It's real simple, it's, it, they're expensive to buy, but the electrical savings in the lawn is tremendous.
Making that...
Yeah, and it, the light reflecting off the white doors give you quite a bit of, you know, you can see very well, I like those.
Well, if you could give me some clear cut sheets on that, because I just actually...
I have the originals, I'll give them made up.
You would?
Yeah.
If you would, because I was really having a...
Yeah, you gave me a copy of the copy, then the copy, and then by the time I got some...
That's probably a lot, they're, they're more than that thick, you know?
Unfortunately, it's, uh, the one, the clearest copy I had.
Okay, so we're not lighting up the whole yard?
No, you're not lighting up anything, actually, I don't, probably don't need it because most of the stuff now is gonna be inside as time goes on.
Okay. If you give me a clear copy of that, I can be, answer, do analysis.
By the way, for the next week, don't have that stuff, you know, you'd have a real good copy of that.
Good, thank you.
Nothing else on the board? Okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So your next tweet, right?
Yes. It was six o'clock.
Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, for both, the bold provisions to the land use laws.
Okay.[1768.03] I am. Sorry, guys, I couldn't get this to you, sir, I'm using the excuse so that I was on vacation for a week. But what we've done, what I've got here are two things.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. It's certain, okay. There are, I believe, the last meeting we had, so a number of things that we had talked about, that were conceptual, and I tried to make them a little more, flesh them out a little bit. I also have the D B two schedule of land uses here. And so, the changes in there that you requested at June twenty-seventh. I think I sent that to you, I sent it to you on June twenty-seventh, and I've made a few changes since then. In reference to a couple of things, and let me go over them very quickly. First of all, the one thing that we had talked about, which we haven't done, was the issue, if you recall, we had discussed the, whether or not we want include banquet halls and convention centers, because those were conspicuously missing. And that was a use that we thought would probably be good use in this particular area in the D B two district. So, they have been included as item number ten on the permitted uses, if you want to make them conditional.
Number nine.
So, you can have an eye, if you can't, apparently. Here. There you go. Did you have that? Put that to you, Dan, please. Convention centers and event halls, I would call them banquet centers, actually, I found a better definition, I like calling it banquet center than event hall, event hall stuffs. But they're two different uses, convention center is usually a much larger one, and also a lot more people. And also, usually is associated with lodging, restaurants, and retail. Now, obviously, we're not going to get Baltimore in our hardware here, so I don't have to worry about that, so, but we don't have any part in the news. But what we do want to do is, given our location, given our focus in the future, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us to be able to offer those kinds of business opportunities in the D B two district. Obviously, since it's in the back, the back portion is away from the road, come out of, obviously, they have to be on a patrolled intersection situation. And I, we can make it permanent, or we can make it conditional, we can come up with standards for conditional if you want to go through that effort. Or we just, really, when we're talking about convention centers and and event halls, we're really talking about two things, you're going to be limited by septic. Because the number of people who can attend is going to be based on how big of a septic system you can build. The second thing, of course, is parking, or at least the big issue, which parking can be an enemy of the city. So, that's going to be the real limitations to the size of the building, plus, as you gentlemen stated before, technically, we're talking about a hundred thousand is going to be the, it's being the limit of building size and septic. Yes, Marty?
Question, under these uses, does this also eliminate the future of mass gathering permits? Because these are usually just a different event.
Um, mass gathering permits are usually-
Does anything over a certain number, and you, you're having a wedding, like a banquet hall or anything else, many times you have more than a hundred. I mean, and it's only, it's a rental condition or anything else. But I'm just asking that if we have this in our ordinance this way, right, and this is its primarily use, we wouldn't necessarily need a mass gathering permit, because all the requirements would be basically fulfilled, except for under mass gathering, is, quote unquote, excuse me, a store state?
I think mass gathering permits are usually for events that are once or twice a year, or three times a year. Or just, they're for a location that is not really designed to accommodate the number of people, the traffic, and the utilities that are generally put there. You have porta potties, you have temporary water, you have tents. A festival like the upcoming farm festival, that's a mass gathering, because we have no facilities out there. These, these kinds of facilities, obviously, as you yourself said, have all of, all of the necessities for handling that kind of population already built onto the site. So, mass gathering permit would not be necessary for that, it would be necessary for a wedding reception in your backyard, or, as I said, festivals that we have periodically, and then probably even seal that we have for more and more of those festivals in the future. So, that's what a mass gathering-
But usually, it was triggered by the number.
Right, that is the, that is the tripwire, but it's also, it's also based on not having adequate number of facilities to accommodate.
I always thought it was based upon the number.
Number.
And the length of time, and it was like, what was it, a hundred or a hundred and fifty people in four hours yet, or something like that?
I can look at our ordinance.
Yeah, I could look at it. I don't think we can do anything here that would override that.
Well, I think it's also for a situation which is not already a permanent use, because we already have, we have theoretically places that, that, well, a good example would be, when this is more than a hundred and fifty, they don't require a mass gathering, because it's almost, only if they're having-
Special events.
Only if they're special events. But their day-to-day capacity, they have over a thousand people.
They require a mass gathering if they go beyond, because they have a capacity limit on, that's been on their plan. So, anything beyond that, they require a mass gathering. The convention center, if you don't have a capacity limit on-
You will, I mean, you will have those capacities. And I think, you're right, if they were to, let's say, have a gigantic car show, which people are in the parking lot as well, that exceeds their normal capacity of their halls, then yes, that would require a mass gathering.
Now, I'll check the ordinance just, we certainly don't want it for every event, somebody have to come to the house for a mass gathering.
I'm just throwing that out as a, you know, I mean a-
It's a legitimate question. We also have a mass gathering permit for, for the triathlon's that we have come through, the half marathon's. Quite weird, we have those. Because they're going through- You don't need them for golf tournaments. You know, and for golf tournaments, the same, golf tournaments look different than a convention center or a event or a banquet. It's, it's-
One day, one day.
If they, if they exceed that, then there's, there may be an issue, but, you know, if you were, if we were to have a pro-am or something here, well, it's a real tournament. It's possible. I want to, I want to rent pocket spaces in my, to shovel back here. But, I mean, that's, that seemed like a hole. We had talked about what, offering a greater number of kind of uses, and looking at what the potential would be also to tap off some of the tourist market, and our positioning down, close to the water. There really aren't too many places that have this capability. Aside from things like the Monanthen, you know, in other large hotel, tall ones like that, there's no facility that has that kind of capability.
Yeah, very, the Legion.
The Legion does, yeah, but, I mean, if you wanted to do a two or three hundred, you know, a two or three hundred person event, they don't fit that capacity. If there's a market for it, something would- Keely wants to put a, you know, a center here, sure, that'd be nice. So, that's, and I have definitions for that on the second sheet, I'm sorry, I put event halls, I changed to banquet halls. They'll just be like, event hall is just two minutes, two minutes script, everybody understands the banquet hall. And-
Will there be a definition of event hall?
The definitions are on the, on the second sheet, the D B, the D B two additional definitions and special exception regulations, in which I'll just put it out loud, that the banquet hall is an establishment which is rented by individuals or groups to accommodate private functions, including now limited to banquets, weddings, anniversaries, and similar celebrations such as made, or may not include kitchen facilities for the preparation or catering of food, the sale of alcohol and beverages, for on-premise consumption only during scheduled events, and not open to the general public. So, in other words, it's not going to be a law. Now, convention center is a little different, convention center can be more of a, an ongoing thing. Which is a facility designed to use for conventions, conferences, seminars, product displays, recreation facilities, entertainment functions, longer accessory functions, including temporary outdoor displays, food and beverage preparation and service for on-premise consumption, lodging facilities, restaurants, retail establishments, maybe associated with conventions. We'd rather have it that way, because it's a complex. So, those are two definitions that are proposed, gentlemen, you can make whatever comments you want to about them. They are two totally, they are not completely different, but they are different, whereas convention centers are ongoing, banquet hall is more the kind of like, like the Eagles, or that, that's, that's kind of the sort of thing, which is a banquet hall. Or Keely.
Should, should there be a model size associated with this?
About three tables?
Well, you know, banquet hall, if you have one table in there, you want to call it a banquet hall just so you can put it in, you know, that's what I'm thinking about. So, you could push in the size.
I've seen minimum size, and I've been searching around to see what other people say, I've seen, you can have minimum sizes for the answer board, I found some of them. You can have a minimum size if you want.
I think it can be restrictive, or you could get too restrictive.
No, I think you could have a minimum size and base it upon the mass gathering permit. And say, it's a, you know, this, it has to be able to seat a hundred or a hundred and fifty people. I can't be like thirty of them in there, but the facility has to be able to seat X number of people.
Well, I put the U's on it, this is-
Well, I think, I think we're going to build a banquet hall up in nineteen seventy-one, this is pretty cute.
Yeah, right?
No, I don't think that's- Well, I think what John's talking about is just having that, having something in there to take away the caveat of somebody coming in with a plan that they say is a banquet hall, that, I mean, really doesn't pass the straight face test, but they sit there and are adamant that it's a banquet hall.
I'm going to have a banquet hall in a, in a-
Right.
Torn-out mobile home, because I, I can put it up in here, right?
Or, I agree with that, which is why I was suggesting something, the minimum of whatever the mass gathering permit would be.
I could do that.
I don't make it reasonable, but something like-
Define reasonable.
Right.
And I'm not trying to be facetious, really, are you saying fifty, fifty seats, a hundred seats?
How many, how many people would you sit around a table, how many tables would you have?
Usually four. The standard in restaurant design is usually four people per table.
I would, to me, I would say a banquet hall, in my mind, that, that would have to seat, not necessarily use it for a hundred or more, you know, so a minimum of a hundred, in my mind, is a reasonable number.
All right, so you figure ten square feet per person? No, it's not.
And if you have a kitchen, and it's a track, the kitchen facility, you need a building minimum, okay, of at least two thousand square feet.
To call it a banquet hall, all right.
I mean, with, with, with all your other properties that you need, facilities, meaning restrooms and everything else, which all sucks out of there, and if you have a kitchen in there, it doesn't take long to turn out and to hack it down five hundred feet out of that, so you're getting fifteen, hundred feet.
How, how big is the banquet hall over here at the golf course?
Doesn't sit around?
Probably six thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, the, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to think.
I would, I would bet-
Depending on the fire stuff, and that's only about sixty or seventy feet.
Right, and it wasn't full?
It wasn't full, so, yeah.
When you think of the-
Eagles is west, but-
When you think of the gym right here, you can see like three hundred people in there.
That's true.
Yeah.
But they're not seated for service.
Well, no, but just in terms of size, and, and, you know, just to visualize it.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't think a hundred is-
Yeah, I don't think a hundred would be a lot.
So, instead of area, just to number of persons served, and they're going to have to show to the planning board.
Yeah.
There's a standard, we'll take the standard out of the architectural standards.
Oh, yeah, because you're a concealer, you have to square foot or whatever.
I know, in Mars, for instance, the state of Maine, it takes a seven to ten square feet per person, which is only a thousand square feet.
Yeah, it's not, it's not.
It's not.
I agree with John, I think a hundred's a good starting point.
It's really, yeah, it's tiny for these kinds of functions.
And remember, this is a D B two, actually, with the D B two, we want more large scale stuff in there anyway, right? You don't want, you really don't want puny stuff, and then you put that in the D B one.
We could, we could say five thousand square feet, they could just put up a divider, cut it up and make a couple of those, and have more than one event at the same time.
Yeah, but then, if you got a two large, you may have discovered some of them.
Yeah, and that would be the problem.
Yeah, I, I'd rather anticipate exactly, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to be like fountain of specific, I'm discursive, it should be. We could say a minimum that you just, if you want to build it bigger, go ahead and build a table. Yeah, we're personal, too, so is the general consensus, one hundred people?
Yeah, that would qualify as a banquet hall.
Hang of a whole? Yeah, I mean, it would be, I mean-
Our pet, we got.
Yes, I will add that to the definition.
But that would, you could have, you could have an intent that was less than that, that's just what it's intended to be.
I don't see any kind of problem with their additions.
Yeah, no, I have, I have- Okay, I need to do that.
Well, you know, that, that, look, let's, let's drive off that bridge when we get to- Okay, the second is, how a convention center? Do you need a minimum size, but I mean, it's got a squeeze for the center.
Bigger the better, do it.
Same thing?
Yeah, but you still want a minimum, we want the bigger ones, but you want to put it with a thousand people.
Convention center, oh, fifty people.
If you want to rent a convention center for fifty people, it's expensive.
It's very expensive. But they, but they, there are small-
Convention center is-
Small conventions, they have seen small ones in Inns and stuff.
The, the main, the entological society, that's, they're not too big, they have conventions.
Well, you got convention, you can have them just like at the Sebagel Brewery, you know, that, that could be a convention center, I mean, everybody just write it off for the deck, you know?
Well, one thing about the convention center, it's, as, as the definition says, it wasn't trying to limit it too much, but it was just basically saying it's a multi-faceted kind of facility.
Multi-purpose.
That provides, that's, the, the use is to have sales events, product displays, seminars, and conventions, obviously.
And then we have to put a people-
That's right.
Right.
Not a golf cart ghetto or-
Probably almost have to go minimum size, you know, square foot, a hundred people.
Well, do you want me to research that, or you guys want to just pull the number up?
What's the largest big box store we were on in D B two?
A thousand?
A thousand square feet. Oh, actually, we can go higher.
But we're not looking for maximum.
Maximum with, and right now-
Cause of the end, size of the lot.
Proposing is twenty thousand.
Cause of the size of the lot.
To you.
Oh, okay.
I'll just say, you know. If we come to a conclusion we weren't going to have minimum sizes in D B two, minimum maximums?
Yeah.
Well, did I miss that?
I don't, I don't, I don't think we're on that.
About building size?
Yeah.
You decide that anything greater than one hundred thousand square feet will be conditional use of the station.
Right.
But we only had two motions with no decision made yet, it was taken.
Oh, that's right, that's right, because it got a fee.
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't have enough of that.
It's able.
So, we'll bring that back up, Mr. Chairman, but, okay. Right now, we've got a question that I need an answer from, from the board on convention center. It's been suggested by the public that we, we look at square footage instead of capacity. And the issue is, do you want me to look and see what an average small convention center is, or do you want to pluck another one in here?
Square footage does make more sense, because there are displays and things involved. I think we need to get a handle, I don't know that you necessarily have to search out- I think we need to get a handle, I don't know that you necessarily have to search out the small convention center, but we have to get some idea of what a convention center, what, what the size of a typical convention center is.
Okay.
Well, well, I mean, just, yeah, as, as memory serves me, though, the Hanford Building, I believe it was about seventy thousand square feet, the Hanford and the Hanford.
That would be a huge conference.
No, it would be very big, I'm just trying to think of something in that scale of things that, that, you know, I can relate to.
Well, the VIP is ten thousand.
Their own roughly.
Right?
See, I, I was thinking something about ten thousand square feet.
Yeah, ten thousand.
No, I'm not.
Just trying to figure the, the grand scale, the size of the building.
Oh, oh, oh.
We're talking min- we're talking minimum.
No, I'm trying to, minimum size.
We're talking minimum size.
That's, that's.
Which is why.
Yeah, which they told you ten thousand, so VIP is ten thousand?
VIP is.
Nine thousand twelve.
That's, that's. I mean, the typical white age is always ten thousand, that's a, that's a typical ten thousand. So, typical white age, that's ten thousand square feet, which is really.
Hundred by hundred.
Small.
Yeah.
If you look at, and putting displays up and having people up and have shelves.
For a small convention, I mean, that could actually be a niche, because if you have a small group that needs a place to meet, you don't wanna remember you.
Small conventions, seminars, something along those lines that you could.
Which there's a great eat.
There is.
Especially.
As you eat, you see with really long, huh?
Yeah, well, it.
There's a huge.
Build upon that, you know.
Build upon.
You build upon it, you know, you have a smaller convention center, and then maybe have, you know, a restaurant.
Right.
Over there.
Right.
If we have a big building, they can make small rooms within it.
That's true, and, and that's really a business decision done by whoever the entrepreneur is.
So you don't limit it.
So somewhere between ten thousand.
If we think.
Eighty thousand.
Well, I think if we, we're look, we're talking about a minimum.
Right. We're not talking about maximum, I mean, if you could get, if you want to go to Augusta.
We could get the Boston Seafood Show up here.
Or the Boston Art Show, you know, or any, you know, there's always a need for places like that. You know, believe it or not, there aren't a lot of them out there. I mean, I've had to go to, you're talking about small, I've had to go to the, uh, um, let's say, the, uh, conservation commissions, main conservation commissions, I have to go to Augusta, because there's not a lot of places around. It's big enough, it's not a small group, but it's not, it's, it's not huge. And there are a lot of places that you can go. It sticks so many people in, you know, into the lounge or the restaurant.
Look in the building, we gotta go, for school.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just gonna recommend that we do a minimum of ten thousand feet, because otherwise, we're gonna be in a situation the next month.
To me, that's a, that's a good start.
Hundred by hundred starting, so.
Alright.
Alright, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay. Yep, I kept noting that Marty was going.
Marty, you left the building?
Morning.
It's a tough night, morning.
Alright, so we have ten thousand square feet for the convention center. We have minimum of service of one hundred individuals, limited by groups of no less than one hundred individuals.
Well, that's what it would be designed to be.
One hundred.
Right. That's what it would be designed to be.
Capable.
Right.
Capable of seating, minimum, one hundred persons.
If you wanna rent it for two people, can you do it by?
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, but there's, there's a lot of rent halls that are out there that, that have thirty people at it, as, at an anniversary party or something like that, that are much bigger capacity than what it's being used for.
And that's where breakdowns come in.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright, that's good, good job. Alright, so we've got that taken care of, I'll make those improvements to you. Um, the next thing is, I, the board voted at the last meeting about to eliminate multi-family or duplexes from the DB two district. So, the only, the only uses that would be permitted in the DB two district are the residential, residential, in an operating business on it, okay, on the floor area. Actually, we're saying basically, we're, we're on the DB one, we have vertical, um, distribution land uses, where you can have residential on the second floor as much as you want to. Uh, and the way we've written in the DB two, there's no residential except for one house on per lot. Which brings up a issue, correct?
Per business, right?
Per business, yeah.
So if you had one, multiple businesses, you've got multiple residences.
Yeah, as long as the floor area of the residence is less than the floor area of the business. So, in other words, as you recall, in the DB one, we had, the requirement was that the first floor had, had to be business, correct? And you could have multiple floors of residential, which would actually exceed the business use on site. In the DB two, it's the opposite. Residential floor area cannot exceed the, uh, uh, the business floor area. And it, and it has to be single family, no multifamily, no duplex. So that was the decision made at last minute, and that's what item number twenty-eight, uh, shows is those corrections made in there. The other thing that did not happen, quite frankly, was that, uh, in no sooner minutes, there was, uh, there were several motions made regarding, uh, what the maximum square footage of any buildings in the DB two was, and all of them failed. Anybody wanna take those on again, or shall we just leave it alone?
Let's, let's just find out, and make a motion that we restrict the size of buildings in the DB two to one hundred thousand square feet. I guess I know where that was going.
I, I imagine a hundred thousand, what's, what is?
Had a fruit seven, cabela's.
That's less, that's more than a hundred.
Not much. Not as much.
Yeah, you can, I bet you, I bet you Lowe's over there, I wouldn't, I didn't have any deal with that, but I bet you that's in the one twenty to one forty range.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because they had said, like Market Basket.
Yeah.
When it, it was in the paper, well, some was around there, and they were cutting it down.
Yeah, Market Basket won't use the whole piece of it, right?
All around that.
Yeah.
Um, it's a pretty big building.
That's right.
The most second to most.
Oh, wait, that would've been a little different a couple weeks ago.
Not anywhere a couple weeks ago.
So.
Where is the, where is this downtown business district located in our plan?
Can you put that back up?
Yes, I can. So, I put your ego. Yeah, this isn't the downtown, this is, well, it's the DB two, which is applying.
Behind it.
It's behind the downtown.
Right. So a hundred thousand would not be, you know. Sorry, Marty left, because he wanted to discuss the boundaries, so I brought the maps.
Oh, Marty, he can, he never makes it for the boundaries.
Basically.
So that's just replying.
Limerick Road, coming down, Cannon Brown Road.
Route one.
Right.
Limerick Road, River Road, uh, Old Post Road.
Right.
And, um, this is what we currently have, although this is still up in the air. The green is DB two.
Yep.
The red is, uh, DB one. Idea of DB one is basically that small village look, up close to the road, structure down, close to the road. It's not wasting all that space in front of it, in front, which it currently is, if you notice that everything's set way back. Uh, it encourages everybody coming, in fact, they're required to, I think the maximum set back from the road is fifty feet. So, we're pushing that back, and what we're doing is we're, we're making it horizontally stratified. So, we're encouraging back use of land, because as you can see, there's a lot of land in here. And it's, um, it's currently really residential. And it's, there hasn't been a lot of residential takers, there won't be. And, uh, quite frankly, given a lot of the constraints we have up here in the DB one, where the BI district with the ledge on one side and wetlands on the other, more of our better lands down here, it's not great, but it's better than ledge, lasting ledge all the time. I think Paul was showing us exactly the problem that occurs up there here. Shallow bedrock ledge and wetlands. So, here, down, we've got wetlands, we've got some, some flush river soils, we've got some non-burbs, none of wetlands, none of burbs, none of hiker, none of burbs, but, yeah, we've got some lots of soils. And in fact, I even brought, uh, I brought another map that we, uh, that shows some of the national wetlands.
What's the general distance off of Route one to the, to the back of the DB two zone?
Two thousand, right now it's one thousand.
It's just following along existing property lines?
We've changed that to follow pro- existing property lines, because we're running into too many situations where people's lots might cut. Um, and the idea is to encourage people to develop some of their properties. Uh, the same thing, the reason why we have Sawtooth on DB one is because the same thing, we're trying, where possible, to do, uh, to follow existing property lines, some are deeper than others, but the object is not to cut people's lots. Given that full potential. Uh, by the way, the normal playhouse.
Yep.
Uh, wants to be all on the line, they asked, and I said, that's probably right.
Mr. Chair. You know, this, going to ten dollars square feet, I mean, obviously, I mean, we had a discussion before about getting the comprehensive plan committee together, and, and we had a discussion on that at the last lesson meeting, we have all the members down. Here's my suggestion, before you put, uh, a maximum size on that, I think we should have a discussion with the comprehensive plan committee, because they're the ones, you know, it's gonna have to be, they're the ones that have to sell it, right? We gotta change the comp plan, and I think we should meet, the planning board and a comp plan committee should meet and discuss faults and size in that area. That, that's probably my suggestion, but, you know, it'd be nice to get them involved, because they're gonna have to change the comprehensive plan.
Well.
You know, to meet this.
Right, we're putting the cart before the horse, with all of this. We don't know what the comp plan committee's gonna.
I understand, but it's, but it's in the motions now, all, all the members have been identified, and, um, you know, we voted on, and Monday, we approved all the members, and it's, you know, I'm hoping that we're gonna start meeting here real soon, and maybe at first, first one should be a meeting with the planning board.
But what I'm saying is, we don't know if the comprehensive plan, what they're gonna come up with, right? We don't know that this is gonna move along with that, so, you know, with all of this, we'll put the cart before the horse.
Well, you mean.
Well, it's gonna be work to, I mean, it's gonna have synergy here.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not, we're not gonna let them all off on themselves, and that's what item number two in the, in this section of the, of the agenda is gonna be discussing, you know, limitations on what we're doing, we're not doing the whole comp plan again.
No, because, because the hundred thousand square feet greatly deviates what's in the comp plan today, that's huge, right? That's, so, to me, that's a big step.
What's in the comp plan?
The comp plan says, you know, that CCS, right?
Yep.
So, um, low intensity retail office, you know, I mean, that's, uh, small to medium scale retail office services. This isn't small to, this is huge.
It is, but it's also not in the DB, it's not in the CCS district. CCS district is now the DB one district.
Yeah, but you're covering some of that there, aren't you?
We're changing a few boundaries, that's all.
Huh?
We're changing a few boundaries. It's still, actually, you know, this thing, if you remember, really, Dan, this vertical, or this horizontal stratification of land use is driven by that comp plan. Because it's important for citizens, and, and, and there, those conclusions came from surveys and from public hearings. Citizens wanted to create a village, I'm sorry, we used that word. And they wanted a village downtown, small retail, community scale kind of retail along Route one in this particular area. And that's what CCS is, and that's exactly what the name implies, community, uh, community commercial, community scale, neighborhood scale. We're honoring that with the DB one, we're saying, yes, we agree, and, but we, we think that your standards that you, that you used in the DB, uh, in the CCS, didn't really, didn't match what your goal was. That we're gonna try to compress things down and make the, make it more of a village kind of feel that you wanted in there, that, that small commercial, um, scale, which frees up the back for a larger stuff.
The DB one, to me, is fully conform to what's there today in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, because when you get to the DB two, now, you're greatly changing that, and I'm, I'm thinking that now that we've got that committee together, and I'd be good for the board to hold off on that part, get the comprehensive plan committee kind of roundtable and say, hey, this is, you know, you guys tell the comprehensive plan committee, this is kind of why we're going, and the direction that we're going, and just so that they're not blindsided, and the planning board has already done this work, go ahead and change the comprehensive plan.
Well, you can't do that anyway, we, it's, it almost doesn't matter, we could go the way you're suggesting, or we could go with, you know, whatever we decide size-wise, because when the comp, you know, the planning board cannot dictate for the comprehensive plan, or it's the other way around. Comprehensive plan committee is gonna do their thing, whatever they do, we've gotta conform to it, so we might have to redo some of this planning that, you know, we've got on the.
That's kind of why I'm saying, before you get too big, we oughta get them involved and say.
But we're gonna have to tweak it no matter what.
Yeah, I think if you, if you lead out with a hundred thousand square, any number, at least it gives them something to think about.
No matter what, what happens, we're gonna have to make adjustments. That's my feeling.
Yeah, me too.
So, it's up to the board, I mean, we could vote or not vote, but that's a lot of.
There is a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I mean, we can vote it, we can, we can.
Defer it to the comp plan.
I would, I'm not sure that I would agree that we should defer it to the comp plan. I think we should, I think we should vote affirmatively on it, so that we have provided the comp plan. This is something that we're looking at and we would like to see from a planning board point of view.
Right.
We're the ones that have to put together the nuts and bolts of whatever the design happens to be that they come up with. And, and I think that this is part of it, and if they come to us and they say, well, no, a hundred thousand is too big, then we can scale that back down, but I'd like to be able to, to proceed forward, say, okay, we've put what? A year, year and a half into this already?
Two.
Two years? We should, we should continue to develop what we think it needs to look like, and they can give us general guidance and direction, and we could, if, if they want it to be smaller, they can say, no, it's too big, and we'll make it smaller, as opposed to having the comp plan go. I don't know how big we should have it. No, just, yeah, that's not what I'm, that's not what, that wasn't my intent, my intent was, you know, I mean, you guys know what you want, and, and, you know, fully support what you want, and we didn't want to get the comprehensive plan committee together and say, here, here, here's the comprehensive plan committee, here's what we got, here you go, we've got all these, uh, you know, we need to get those folks engaged and get these ASAP.
Well, I think it's gonna be a case of selling them on the reason why we've come to these conclusions.
I, I think we need to be able to present them with the conclusions that we've come to.
Yeah.
So, from an infrastructure standpoint, would we be comfortable that the infrastructure that's right there on Route one would, would be able to service a hundred thousand square foot building?
I think we have the water supply.
Right, I agree.
I think we have the electrical supply, and I believe we have the traffic, we have the traffic capacity. The thing that's the limitation is gonna set there.
Yep.
And, um, that's gonna make more discrimination of how big our banquet facilities are, more than, than any regulation would be. Um, sewer is going to be our Achilles' heel in some ways in this project, in this whole process. And one of the things that the economic development or the marketing plans, only right now, the Chesapeake region is like, is a question that I keep hammering at, and frankly speaking, I know this is sacrilege, but I'm more concerned about the market stuff than I am about the branding, to be honest with you. I wanna know what the cost benefit, if we, if the kind of businesses that they are recommending are going to be high waste channels and acquire sewer, then we've got a big decision to make as a community.
Right.
In terms of infrastructure investment.
That's a big investment.
It's a huge investment.
Because, but.
Not, not, we can get in a retention.
I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to a hundred thousand square foot building, per se, but I don't foresee a developer coming in with a hundred thousand square foot building without a bubble of sewer.
Right. This could be a tough, tough.
I think, I think it's gonna be a tough sell at fifty thousand.
It could be.
Right.
Although we do have seasonal cottages, and they are doing theirs on septic, community septic.
They're not doing anything right now, they're, they're.
We'll talk about that later.
That's, that's a little bit.
Things don't work.
Right, sure.
That's what was reported, that was something.
You know, that, that is, Jamie, that is the real limitation that we have. We have not, as a community, made a decision on what level of infrastructure investment we need to do. We haven't made a decision on how to fund our fire trucks yet. So, when we start talking, when we start talking about things like important issues like sewer, first of all, who's gonna take it? It's the next big issue, I'm sorry, is that, yeah, Kenaway, I'm sorry. Kenaway, my bad. You know, Kenabuck comes to mind, but, you know, it's better for two and one's gravity and the other one's pump stations. Pump station either way, gotta get up both sides.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you're gonna have pump stations.
We're gonna have pump stations all over, so. The one good thing that has happened, that has encouraged this though, has been the improvements that were made to the water system the last three years.
Yep.
That really has changed the game. I don't think we're gonna deal anything about extending KLP's franchise, which we'd love to do, so that's, that's not gonna be discussed anytime soon. So, gas is right now nowhere.
But we'll get around gas, I mean, you have developer will get around the lack of natural gas.
But sewer, you know, and so the issue is also, will we be concentrating more on the types of businesses that don't need sewer? That prefer not to pay for sewer? And in many ways, that's where the DB one district probably would be in that category. Those are the smaller users who are not high water, uh, high sewage waste producers. You get to convention centers and so forth, they may be self limited by, by the lack of infrastructure. But at least we're not shutting them out of the zoning ordinance, and I think that's one of the things we'll wanna make sure of, is that we don't shut them out. Large, multi-family, you know, projects, again, soils, lack of sewer is gonna be limitations and there are other locations, as you said. But we also recognize that we have around us many communities that have all of the infrastructure in industrial parks that have vacant sites. So, it's not always a silver bullet to have the sewer water, gas all in the site. Doesn't necessarily mean you build it, they will come, so that's why we're giving priority.
I think we should move on.
Yeah, you gotta move on.
I support the second, how does everyone feel about making the maximum size a hundred thousand square feet?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm supporting.
I'm supporting.
Okay. Okay, you have us.
Hey, we got that turn to make.
Yeah, I took my five minutes.
Watch the building design.
Progress.
Okay.
Pushing, push.
Yeah, I'm gonna push them faster. Uh, the other conditional use, I did add one more conditional use, gentlemen, and that was utilities, that, I don't know how I missed that, but utilities need to be in there, period.
What do you mean by utilities?
Yeah, you're gonna be like- Sewer, water, pump stations, electric facilities.
As a conditional use?
They are right now. Of course, everything is a conditional use at that point. They are, I believe all utilities are conditional use right now. Let's go to the table.
Yeah, we, because we looked at the-
I'm just not sure I understand that.
Yeah, I don't understand, let him explain what it is.
Yeah, public utility, all conditional uses in every district.
So, it would be, it's a conditional use to put a building in such as the pumping station or a telephone pumping station?
Pump station, yeah.
Okay, okay. Cause I'm just starting to grasp, utilities are, yeah, I need a conditional use to put electricity in this building.
Now I understand what you're saying. It's usually the, the pertinent facilities that we handle. So, they got a pump sta, when KKW put in their pump station down there, that was done at the staff level as a conditional use.
I think most of this would end up at staff level, wouldn't it?
Usually, unless you get a big pump station. But, yeah, that, that is not a small water pump station and the size of it was sufficient that it can be done at the staff level. So, we bang that one.
Okay.
Um, so I threw that in there just to be consistent with everything else and I don't know how we missed that in the past. Which brings us to the issue of special exceptions, which you- Two of you weren't here, right, for that discussion? You weren't, you weren't here, actually, three of you weren't here. Oh, so this is an educational-
What day was this discussion?
This is June twenty seventh.
I was here.
You were, that's why you were voting, yeah, you were one of the knows. Remember special exceptions as something that I believe Bentley Warren brought up? Because the issue was, do we want to limit the ability if we do have somebody who does come in and wants to do a planned unit development? I know, I'm in the sky, but remember, every single time you think that we're not gonna get something, we get, or we get seasonal cottages, or we get, or we get Kate's. And the board has conclusively stated that you don't want a contract zone, or you don't want a planned unit development or planned mixed use development ordinance, so we rejected both of those and so we're gonna, one of the things that Bentley had suggested was pretty interesting, he said, well, how about looking at it as a special exception? So, you're not creating this zone, but you would, you would actually allow it under certain circumstances. So, I wrote a little, I put it in special exceptions. The only one I could think of at the moment was the planned mixed use development consisting of multiple residential uses and non-residential uses. And then if you go over to the definition thing, you'll see special exceptions, section fourteen point five, it should be better labeled, but it wasn't. And that goes under ZBA. Because, gentlemen, special exceptions always go to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Because it's really, it's almost sort of like a variance, it's not a variance, but it's, it's something where the ZBA has to make a decision on whether or not something is in keeping with the spirit of the zoning ordinance. And that's what a special exception is, it's basically is allowing a use that is not allowed by the zoning ordinance into a district because it actually, its nature is such that it is compatible, or not uncompatible, let's put it that way, with existing or proposed future uses for that district. Many towns use, let's say, gravel pits as special exceptions instead of conditional uses, we can make conditional uses in specific areas. Uh, the idea of this was that it's not guaranteed that you can get planned unit development district, or a planned unit development project, that it would have to go to ZBA and then once it was approved by ZBA on its merits as a zoning, let's put it this way, non-conforming zoning type that would not cause harm, then we come to the planning board for, you know, its usual site plan or site plan approval process. And the standards for that, which I'm sure you'll wanna debate, are found in section fourteen five two. I did not go through the whole process of the application because I wasn't gonna go through that effort and this wasn't gonna fly. So, fourteen five one, fourteen five defines a special exception, as in means a potential legal land use in a zoning district which they are, so it doesn't need it. So, it's gotta be, it's gotta be cited in that district. You can't have special exception for all junk yards in the town and they can go in any district. Special exceptions for a specific district, in this case, it would be planned unit development in this specific district. And, let's see, and which are designed substitute issues as special exception permit by the zoning board and appeals and subsequent issuance of a site plan permit by the planning board. A use commenced prior to, this is kind of caveat, any use commenced prior to the effective date of adoption, amendment of this ordinance would and would require special exception permit on the terms of this ordinance for subsequent amendment is not conforming use and any expansion of such use should require a special exception, so that protects existing uses that might, might be, that might be made non-conforming by the zoning ordinance. Okay? They could come back in as special exception. I put that in there, although frankly speaking, I think I might strike it a little later, because we have made, gone through great efforts to, we've done that unusual thing which our attorney thinks is crazy, but she says it's legal, and which we say, anything that's in place at the time we, we adopt this ordinance is a permanent use, period.
For that particular-
For that particular use. It's not a non-conforming use.
Not that particular use, that particular location.
And that particular business, which is a little unusual, but it certainly solves a lot of political problems and rewards our existing businesses for, for being here, so. This is sort of another safety valve in case we don't have that one, which there might be sections of the town that we don't have this language.
Yeah, I like, I like that, I think that's a good idea. I have to admit to being confused, no big surprise. When I look at the special use exceptions.
Right.
The only special use exception is the PMUD, the planned mixed use development.
I haven't come up with any.
Consisting of multiple residential uses. However, the special exception with the application to the ZBA says if the board determines that the proposed use meets all the standards set forth in section fourteen five two, then it would be, that, that they must approve the application. If, if the board determines that they can be made to comply with fourteen five two, the problem that I have is that when I look at fourteen five two, it specifically runs against the permitted use in seven three one.
How so?
Residential, single family, provided the floor area of the residence is less than the floor area of the building. You can only have the single family in DB two, so PMUDs would not be allowed there.
Over the saying, a special exception would say, look at the standards for why a PMUD, forget the PMUD, but look at the, look at the standard that it's gonna do. It's saying that, okay, we're gonna give you a special exception if you meet these standards and frankly speaking, I think this is the first flush, but if the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood, respect physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity, uh, actually, I wrote this so it's, if we have special exceptions in all districts. It's not just specific to DB one.
Okay.
I think we're gonna have to, uh, DB two, I think I'm gonna have to flesh out the PMUD a little bit more. And that's why it's kind of thin there, but it's saying basically, look, if you can put this thing in there, it's gonna have no real impact and it's gonna be a positive impact, the ZBA can put it in, can approve it, but it's gotta meet all of these standards, it's gotta meet all of these criteria.
So, so do we need to list anything in particular under the seven point three point three special exceptions? Or can that be left open for the creativity of the business community to say, hey, I'd like to do this? It doesn't fit neatly into one of your thirty five permitted uses, but here goes why it's, why it's gonna be beneficial, or to the contrary of that, here, here are the reasons why it won't be detrimental to the community and why I would like to see it done. Lay out that argument to the ZBA, if they think it passes muster, then it comes under to the planning board for approval.
That's the concept, it's different, it's gotta pass a higher level than just having a PMUD or having a contract zone.
But why do we need to list out specific, specific things that would qualify for a special exception versus the imagination of the business community?
If, I, I, I agree, if you're going to say, here's something that qualifies for the special exception, then it's not a special exception. It qualifies to be in there.
Yeah, it's more like a conditional use, at that point, I would think.
And I, and I, yeah, to me, that, okay, you can have, we don't want you to have PMUDs, but if you can persuade the, the ZBA that you can have a PMUD, okay, you can have one. No, let them go to the ZBA and say, I have this idea, this is what it is, can I put it in here? The ordinance says, says nothing about whether I can put it in here. Let the ZBA make that determination and then send it back to us, or decline it completely and say, no, you can't do it. To me, that would be a better thing than to have the seven three three with the special exception, just have it the way you have it here.
So, eliminate these six points on the backside.
No, no, you're not, you're not, you're not. Those are general standards, I mean, we gotta have, we gotta have standards that ZBA can pass.
That's why I'm alluding to, we can't do that.
But what you're saying, Jamie, what you're saying is just eliminate the PMUD reference at all?
Just change the seven three three special exception, just reword it.
Right, right. Special exceptions are allowed.
Right.
Must go through the planning board and ZBA and planning board.
Well, you wouldn't even have a listing.
Yeah, but special exceptions, no matter where, they do list the type of use in that, that would qualifies as a special exception. I mean, I know what you're saying and that's more contract zone, which this board doesn't wanna do. And, and PMUDs is the same thing, you guys don't wanna leave an open door for PMUDs.
So, I'd rather take this section that says seven three three special exceptions, the following uses, planned, planned mixed use, and then two is empty. Take that out completely, so it's not even in this section of the ordinance. You have it here that says that you have the right to go to the ZBA and make your argument to win, and if you win, they can send it back to us and say, yes, we think this fits into DB two.
That's a contract zone, guys.
But this says use is specified as special exemption, right off the bat.
Right, and if you have a-
Fourteen five two, so if you don't have the use is specified, you can't go to this.
But if you have a use that's specified, it's not a special exception.
Sure it is.
No, it isn't, it's a conditional use, we've said you can do this if you can persuade somebody else.
As long as you meet these higher standards.
Yeah, these conditions, right.
It's a condition of use.
It's gonna go one more step, it's gonna go to the zoning board.
Yeah, I thought because we're saying that, that, you know, we can treat it as a conditional use.
Okay, it's a mechanism. It's been found out.
So, what's the, I mean, because of my lack of experience on the board, what has been the history of contract zones and the discussions around contract zoning?
Well, the discussion about contract zoning came about because we have done contract zoning twice. We've done it twice, but it wasn't really contract zoning per se. Contract zoning is we, we go through a process and which, um, a, a, a use is allowed within a specific zone or in general, in an area, it goes through the selectment, it goes through the planning board, and we, you know, we've run into them before. The boards, the way we've used contract, uh, contract zoning in the past, and I can't say it hasn't been successful, but somebody comes to us and says, hey, would you change the zoning? It's, it's not as enticing, if you will, it doesn't say, we're willing to listen. It's, it's a situation where really a developer or a property owner would have to be aggressively seeking out a zone change. That's what it really boils down to. And the board has been amenable to those zone changes, but it's nothing more than a zone change. And using the zone change doesn't involve changing of an entire zone, what it does, it, it creates new land use that is a conditional use that, that is allowed in the specific zone. So, we create this new land use classification. For instance, Kate's butter was called an agricultural demonstration facility. Because clearly, that's an industrial use in a, in a rural preservation zone. What the board did is they, they negotiated, and I'm speaking for these gentlemen who have gone through this process, but what they did is they have approached, they wanted basically concessions to make it fit in with the character. Uh, they got those concessions, they wanted visual, um, visual controls so that it would fit into the landscape and reflect the agricultural character and history of the town, and they got that. And then they had to go through the normal zoning process. So, it's not, so it's a longer drawn out process in which it requires more aggressive petition by the, the landlord.
Right, but, I mean, really, my question was where, in reference to you saying the board has not been in favor of, of contract zoning.
No, they're not. Well, I'll let you guys speak for it.
Yeah, I mean, where, I mean, is that been, how recently was that discussed?
This year.
Last year.
Okay.
Last year and this year.
Almost every year.
Every year.
Yeah.
No, contract zone, the feeling of the board has been that if you have contract zone, then throw away your zoning ordinance because you can do anything anywhere, why didn't you have it up in the-
You're coming up to, right, yeah, that was the biggest issue.
Right. So, that's the basic thing, and the, the way we're doing it currently, like we've done with Kate's butter, it actually puts the ultimate control and the ultimate approval with town meeting because we have to go to town meeting to get approval for the zoning change. And, you know, that board- And, you know, that board felt that that's where the authority should be.
And, and the PMUD was similar kind of thing. Why, it actually didn't like the looseness of PMUD.
Right, it's gotten very close to contract zone. And even the special exception, I mean, that's another way of getting around. You're saying in your ordinance, you know, we have this omitted uses, so anything that is not listed you can't do. And then you're saying.
Unless.
Unless.
Wait, there's more.
But there's always.
Let the ordinance and let them do it. I mean, you know, make up your mind what you want to do.
There's always something, you're not always gonna catch everything.
Right, and that's, that's my concern with a, with a list of thirty-five, I mean, branded vague types of businesses that all of a sudden something wants to come in or would like to come and, and open up a business or have a use on a specific piece of property that doesn't quite just fit into that nice taddy box and, and it becomes an issue.
That was the case with Kate's Butter.
Right.
It didn't fit in the nice little box.
And that was also the case with the seaside resort, yeah. It was, they had basically, time, they were, they were seasonal cottages which weren't permitted in that particular district, which is actually a business, one would say a lodging use, if you will, a long-term lodging use. And, but it didn't fit in any definition. So the, the board feels more comfortable leaving the final decision to the, to the, to the townspeople. The only problem is, the downside of that is that somebody's gotta be very committed to sit and wait out that long process. And with, with the competition among communities as it is, there is a strong possibility where we'll lose potential businesses. And, and this board believes that so be it. You know, if, if, if a business really wants to come to a rumble, we want businesses that are committed for the town, committed to working here. And if the, if the, if the business wants to do something unusual here, we'll work with them to change the zoning, but we're not gonna sidestep the voters' input.
These discussions have to be a very long process. There are special town meetings already called. We have actually gone to lanes to have extra meetings to facilitate things. So they can be moved along.
I mean, the Kate's Butter thing, that was unique, right? I mean, we're putting a business in a rural zone, so we have to make sure that, you know, first thing, we can pass the white paper test. And then, you know, so, I mean, that was, that was huge to make that. But, you know, for all the work that went into that, you know, I think the zoning change itself didn't really take all that long. Took a whole lot longer to.
To get the building.
Right, to get that square, wait the zoning change.
So that's the, the, the thing that I disliked about the special exception. When you say planned mixed-use development, I'd rather, honestly, I'm not sure I like the idea of special exceptions on the one hand. But on the other hand, I think it's a, it's a way for Kate's Butter or seasonal cottages to go straight to the ZBA and say, hey, guys, this isn't in the ordinance, but here's an idea. And if, if the ZBA said yes, then they can come back to us. If the ZBA says no, well, then they can, they can always go to town meeting, which is what they'd have to do anyway.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't like it because the CBA is not as, as day-to-day with zoning issues and planning issues. So, you know, they don't know what's really going on. They meet what, once every other month or something like that.
Yeah, even.
No, they do what they.
Then we take, then we take, they meet only when they need to.
Right.
Then we take it out completely.
They don't, they don't have a handle on things necessarily that we do. And I, I don't think they're, they're the appropriate body to make a decision like this. And then the other part of it is, if you're going to have an exception to your rules, why have the rules in the first place? But that's just my thought of it.
I mean, my thought of that is because we don't, we, I mean, we're sitting here listing out a bunch of permitted uses. But, I mean, who's to say what could come up that's, that's congruous with these type of uses that the four of us and whoever's in the audience just didn't happen to think of while we were putting this list together?
I agree with that. And I, I've argued in the past that we shouldn't be doing permitted uses. We should be doing performance standards. You know, this is what you need in order to be in this zone. This is what you need to conform with. But the board decided to go with uses, and so we're starting with that. But if you add performance standards, then you wouldn't need exceptions. You either fit or you don't. Because there's no way you can possibly think, and I've argued this, you've heard me argue this many times over, there's no way you can think of all the possible uses that would be compatible.
Yeah, the problem has been with the other, the method we have right now, the code enforcement officer is the only one who has the authority to make. If you have a single person who's making the decision of what constitutes this particular use. And our code enforcement officer says, don't give me that much power and I don't want it. And his point is well taken in that there is no appeal.
Well, we're making, we're making things way too complicated. That's our big problem.
We could, we could always put at the bottom of seven three two, number thirteen, special exceptions, and, and label it to, figure out some way to word it that says that if the applicant has something that is not listed here and they think would be a good use, they can come and make the argument to us. And if we agree, we'll move on. And if we disagree, you're out of luck. It creates a problem because you may have a personality conflict.
They could go to the ZBA if we just, if you disagree.
That's, that's true. They could go to the ZBA and take it, take it to that level.
On what grounds do we make the decision?
The eight things, performance.
The standards on the back here.
Right, yeah.
Use that as our guideline and say, you know, hey, if that fits, because you're right, we can't think of everything under the sun. I mean, but if you can fit into these categories and you can say to us, it will fit in this area, and here's the reasons and here's all.
Then why list any uses at all?
I think that the main advantage of listing uses is as a prospective business owner or developer, if you're coming in and you see retail as a permitted use, you know you're not gonna get hung up into some internal small-town politics of, I, I hope the planning board will, will give me an okay on this. Because if retail is, is allowed, they know retail's allowed, and they've got the confidence to do the things upfront, to start to put together a plan that's, that's not gonna be arbitrary based on the four or seven of us that, that say, well, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily like your version of retail. So.
Well, all right, but then we should, if, if you follow that, then we should eliminate the omitted uses portion of it. Then I can see having a list saying, you know, these are sort of standard and, you know, if you're one of these, fine.
Right.
If you're not one of these, but you think you're in that category, come see us and we can make a judgment. But.
But you don't make that decision. The code enforcement officer makes that decision.
No, 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 that's not what.
No, that's why I'm saying we put special exceptions in there, so that we can make that decision and say, yes, this is something that we would think is permitted.
Why call it a special?
Contract zone, then, guys.
Why call it a contract zone? Why not, I go back to, you know, if you have, if, for a certain district, you have certain standards, you want a certain amount of conformity in that district. You spell that out, you say, okay, and these are the uses that fit there, this is how we visualize it. And then if you have something that we haven't listed, we can, you know, we can still bring it to the board and we can decide if it fits based upon those criteria. Why do we have to call it a special exception? Why not just say, if it fits, it fits. We can decide if it's not listed.
I think part of the problem for that, John, was because there was a lot of blowback from property owners and the business community before. That, essentially, we had that in many ways already in the town of Rondo. We had, everything was a conditional use, if you recall. And there were some real serious problems in the business community with everything being a conditional use. Because, first of all, financial institutions were balk at that. Investors would balk at a conditional use because that was, that was a variable, an uncertain variable that you would have to expend a good amount of money in preparation before you got an answer to. And in many cases, I know, we operated, they were permitted uses, you just had to meet certain standards. But it was a, it was a real speed bump and a, and a real deterrent to investing. And, and when we went to permitted uses, you remember, there was a, a giant sigh in the business community and the planning board was praised for going to permitted uses. And we know that there wasn't really that much of a difference that was made by doing that. But what it did is it gave property owners a level of confidence that they had rights to do something. Even though they still have to meet standards, they have rights for something. It made the financial people and the lawyers much happier. So the planning board became heroes when you, when you went to permitted uses. That's, that's, that's the problem with just making all performance-based, because there's too many variables and too many uncertain things. And one thing in real estate development is, the objective is to eliminate as much uncertainty as possible. And.
I can accept that. So we still have a list of the basic plain vanilla every day type uses that are permitted. But then don't have this omitted use clause where you say if it's not listed, it's not permitted unless you can, you know, do all this other stuff. Just say, if it's not on there and you think it fits, come and see us. And then we, you know, if we decide that it does fit, it is compatible, we can add it to the list.
That's what a special exception would do.
But no, with a special exception, that's a whole different connotation.
The problem I have with not, with not having the statement that says that if it's not on this list, then it's not permitted, is then if it's not on this list, big deal, I'm allowed to do it anyway. Just because you didn't think of it, I can still do it because you haven't said I can't. And I think we need to have that in there that says, because there's a standard. And it's not a, what do you want to put in town kind of a standard. If I want to open up a hoochie coochie club and you don't have omitted uses, then guess what, guys, I can open up that club anyplace I feel like it because it's not listed. Which is why I think we need to leave it in there and then have something that says, special exceptions or, or, or something that would say, if you come to us with an idea, we're willing to listen and if it can fit into the area and meet these, meet these standards, then we're willing to do it.
Unlisted use, call it an unlisted.
Call it an unlisted use. Yeah, you know, it's not a bad idea. Unlisted uses.
Because you've got omitted uses and then unlisted uses.
If it's, if, if it's not in this list and you think that it will fit.
It's a super-secret NSA list.
It's not that secret anymore.
Russia knows it.
The only part of government that does listen.
To everyone, all the time.
Anyway, yeah, no, I, but, yeah, I agree with that. I, I have, I have a strong aversion to the special exceptions.
Is it the name? I mean, it's really.
The concept that Richard's explaining it, I'm fine with. But the name, a special exception and the fact, and, and including the ZBA, I don't think.
And that was my question, Dean. Is there a, a statute that requires a, a, a decision like that to go to the ZBA versus the planning board or, or, you know, the budget board?
I don't know of, I don't know of one. I really don't. I know that's the modus operandi in Maine. It's nice to have a separation of boards, separation of powers. It's nice to get a different perspective from, from, from a group that doesn't delve into invert elevations and, 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 and details on a regular basis. Somebody that's looking at a broader perspective. Make it the complaint committee. But the problem is they're not a, you can't, because they're an ad hoc committee.
Right, or a campaign.
Yeah, I mean, I mean. They're not a charter.
A board of appeals has, I mean, very.
Have power.
And very specific power.
Very specific power. And that's why I think most towns go with that.
Right.
If we were in Southern New England, we'd go to the zoning commission, which is not the same as the ZBA. It's one that deals with zoning issues all the time. But they have a, they are a semi-judicial body. So they understand the semi-judicial process that we go through. And they know how to interpret land use ordinance. Are they, you're right, John, these guys, because they, they have such an infrequent workload, they're just, they're not experienced. And that's the real Achilles' heel of this process. It'd be nice to get a separation of powers and get two opinions. But our board is about the opposite of just about every other CBA I've ever run into.
Yeah, I think it works if we do what Richard suggested and then we call it unlisted uses.
Or something.
So.
Something.
But if you have the unlisted use, if you think you have an unlisted use, there is a process. You go to the planning board, we make a decision, then you can appeal that decision, then you can go to ZBA if you want. Why not? That's what ZBA does.
And, and as I said, you were, I thought about the only problem I would see with saying unlisted uses as opposed to, I mean, maybe we don't want to call it special exceptions, maybe we just want to say exceptions and, and say, you know, you can come to us and make the, the presentation. But if we say unlisted uses, that, that's so nebulous.
Well, don't.
Give it a different use.
Right, special use, right. Those special uses are something.
Well, that's why I was saying just exceptions. And you could say, you could make the connotation on the exceptions.
Or use exception.
But I, I do see John's point in that it's not an, it's not an exception to the zone. It's not like we're, we're saying we've got this zone that's, that's all business and we want to make an exception for this one lot and put, you know, apartments in, something like that. I, I follow your logic there. But it, it, it would be beneficial to have some flexibility to, for, for us. I mean, the nice, easy thing to do is to be able to sit here and say, hey, you've got thirty-five types of businesses that can come in here. You don't fit into one of those, we sit here and say, nope, and go home and go to bed at night and never think about it again. But is that the, the just and, and right thing to do?
Well, I, I, I hope we covered just about every base there is. Because, I mean, I'm trying to figure out anything that doesn't fit into our categories.
Hoochie coochie calls, maybe.
We just have to come up with a name.
They're restaurants, they're bars, categories.
It's entertainment.
It's performing arts center.
Performing arts center.
You know, Ian mentioned, you don't even have to, they got a use, I mean, just put it out.
Don't give a name, just put a name.
Here, here's the process, something like that.
Just make a statement.
And then Jim denies a business, he can say, well, you do have this option, that if you feel your use would be good, go to the planning board.
Well, we have to have the standards. We have, we have to have, we have to have certain standards, otherwise it is a contract zone. Then we're doing, actually, a contract use, excuse the contract zone.
Right, but aren't these standards that you have written up for that?
They're pretty strong.
And I would, I would.
But they're dealing more with compatibility.
I would add to number one, whether it's compatible with existing uses and whether it's consistent to the, the other allowed uses in the zone or, or something like that to tie it back in to the type of permitted uses there. Not just saying, we're gonna, we're gonna make this fit in real nice even though it has nothing to do with the rest of, rest of the permitted uses.
Concrete processing plant.
Right.
Well, I think, I think number six kind of covers that. The proposed use would be compatible with existing uses.
Yeah, well, that's only in regards to the noise in, in our, no, I, I like the idea of consistent with other permitted uses. I like that. Permitted uses.
Right. I mean, it ties it back into something.
So that'd be, that'd be acceptable.
They may not be uses that exist. And the, the other thing is, that, that's always been a flaw in some of our, our, our other standards, especially for conditional use. Now, we've got sections of town that aren't even developed. And, well, it's consistent, it's, it's not an impact on this undeveloped land. Well, of course it isn't. But, you know, once the residents moved in, it is incompatible. So it should be on the permitted uses and not necessarily on existing neighborhood. In some cases, we have neighborhoods that are gonna be changing.
So then we have to say permitted and/or conditional, because we have conditional uses.
Okay. Well, frankly, I consider, conditional uses are permitted uses.
That leads me to a, to a question that I was gonna ask.
Sure.
When we look at 732, which is a list of conditional uses, they say that the uses meet all applicable performance standards herein and in section five of this ordinance. And if I look at the permitted uses, the uses meet all the applicable performance standards herein and in section five of this ordinance. Why don't we just make it all permitted uses?
It's actually, it should say seven, I'm sorry, my mistake.
Oh, okay. Because I'm looking at, why don't we just make them all permitted uses?
Conditional uses should say seven because seven, sections, not seven.
Oh.
Oh, you know what that's from?
Nine, seven, eight, isn't it?
Is it nine, seven, eight?
Yeah, it's conditional uses, which is-
It's a separate-
Conditional uses is, in the new ordinance-
It's going to be section five.
It's all one section, I forget what it is because we haven't been in the-
Section five.
No, it's not, section five is, is not confirmed.
Well, I was just wondering, why don't we just make them all permitted uses?
Because there's certain things that you do have conditions that they must all meet.
Section 11.
Is it 11?
Is it 11, thank you, this is section 11. It should say 11. Conditional uses for 11?
Conditional uses, section 11.
Okay.
My mistake.
Nope, I feel better now. I'm looking at it going, I have the same standards in both, both spots.
No, standards of five are performance standards in general, parking, you know- Otherwise parking, all, yeah. That's all landscaping, fire protection, that's what you might call general performance standards. Section 11 are the conditional use performance standards that you want to specify for each conditional use. So things like the use of the specifications for agricultural demonstration facility are in that section. All of them, daycare, everything that's got a conditional use in here that we want specific uses for are unlisted, it's going to be a big list. But that's where, whoever is the applicant goes, knows that if I've got a conditional use, I turn to section 11 and find out what news, what specific standards I need are. And here's the process. The process of conditional use is going to be in there too. Which is going to be the same as site plan, except the criteria is different for approval. So John, we'll add one last, we already got this big section on the site plan approval process. It's going to be saying, go to the site plan. So that's some reduction there.
Right.
Yeah, can't wait.
Half a page.
Well, hey, guys, I'm gonna, I won't let you go on this one. I mean, remember, we started off with a paragraph on contractors under farm retail and we ended up with five pages at the end, we went through that, remember that? And contractor storage yard was a paragraph and we ended up with what, six or seven pages? And great illustration.
But that is because we had to put that in there. And if you're gonna put it in there, you've got to make sure it's fair and it covers all the bases.
Yep, and then sometimes it takes-
Do we need to put it in there?
Well, we do, because we've got problems with that. We've already got, I'm not going to debate that one again.
Let's not go-
I'm not going to debate that one again. Simplify this. With what?
So you're taking out 733 and you're gonna just reword it?
Well, I get the feeling you guys want to get rid of special exceptions as that, at least that title.
And you want to word it?
Absolutely.
Make it-
In what way?
We need to word it in such a way that-
Number 13.
Number 13?
Number 13?
It's more of a footnote.
Right, under conditional uses. Or a separate paragraph.
I think it should be separate.
I think it should be standalone because it would fight a permitted or conditional.
Because remember, conditional use means it's, it's permitted with conditions. And this, you may not permit.
Right, correct.
Given the inability of the board to predict all possible future uses?
I still like the, you know, unlisted uses, let's, I don't see what the problem is.
Yep, I like that myself.
It's, it's what it is.
How about special uses?
Why, now, why do we have to be special?
Well, unlisted just sounds, well, because it is-
Why do we have to, you know, it's just-
Because unlisted uses sounds like, oh, we're dumb and we forgot this.
We did.
No, we didn't, we didn't forget it.
We got it, we got it.
Let's just call it. All right, you want to say something?
Yeah, time was watching on.
All right, I'll give you, give you some ideas, guys. If you have anything, email it to me, I'll throw out some, I'll give it some thought and, and email you with some ideas. Maybe we can do more of this over the email and, and get it kind of squared away before planning board.
Uh, comprehensive plan committee spoke, you want to review that?
Yeah, I guess the question is, the committee's been appointed, rock and roll, ready to go. We have a meeting on the 6th, that's what I was told. It's a Tuesday, it's an introductory meeting.
Okay, 6th, we, we talked about that Monday night, but it's cool.
Well, that's what I was told, be there on the 6th, my boss told me that, so.
I'm sure I'll get a no.
I truly hope so, if not, you heard it here, okay? I guess the scope would be, this is not a comprehensive plan rewrite. We're not doing, we're not getting these, these folks together to review the entire comprehensive plan. A, we don't have the budget, B, I don't have the time. We're going to do it in-house, C, we don't have, nobody's authorized to get a consultant if we were to go outside of me. This is going to be addressing some of the issues that you guys have brought up in this whole zoning rewrite concept. And so I think we're going to be focusing on the issues that, that really were of concern to members of this board and to selectmen as to whether or not they might be treading on violating the, the comprehensive plan because the comprehensive plan did not specify that particular kind of zone. So I think, my feeling is that we should really focus on, I would, I would really like the comprehensive plan committee to focus on, I would encourage them to focus on these districts that we're talking about. And to, to look at the land use there and the needs and the rationale the planning board has used and, and examine that in context to the data. And, and look at those particular areas. I think that's one of the big, the first big thing I think they like to do. The second thing is something we haven't even discussed and that is, we haven't even gotten into residential districts and, and the question of where, when, how residential districts. And I know there's been, and tackled some of these issues, we've asked questions of whether or not we've done residential zoning correctly in terms of where the districts are, whether they really- I mean, they look nice and neat on a plan that, you know, this, this is our growth area, here's our area. This is close to the infrastructure and of course, nobody ever looked at the soil conditions. Oh yeah, this is all lumber, that's perfect in a residential neighborhood. As we all know, the south, or the west side of Blumard Road is floating. And yet that's a high density residential area. So I, I think they, they might want to look at that and look at a couple of business zones that we had talked about, including the, it was a big push by EDC and they kind of shifted that back to the planning board in the townhouse corner district, what to do with Lockham Road essentially. And also the rural zone, something we, we really haven't tackled. Which I think we need to tackle because quite frankly, the, the marketing study that was done by Chesapeake Group kind of reaffirmed things that were done, stated by the residents in, in the complaint in 2005, actually 2004 when work was done. And that was, there's still a very strong sentiment that Rundle is loved for its rural character. Identifying what that is is still a job we haven't done. And are we, I think, our four district and whether or not it's doing anything or if it's accomplishing what it's intended to do is something I think I would ask them to, to tackle as well. I know the board has talked about that in the past. And I think that's, that's something that's still unresolved. And my feeling is that I, I would like to see the focus on that a little bit.
And we talked about with the residential areas and not preserving the rural character. I mean, our, our cluster subdivisions strive for rural character because we take common area, you know, we condense and then we take common area, we usually turn those common areas into fields and wooded areas. I mean, I'm not sure where that economy comes from, but I mean, I, I think that when we do subdivisions, we, the board strives to keep it relatively rural.
The problem is, most of the lots that we have are too small to create that image. The common areas that we have are little bands of open space that's surrounded on all four sides and we don't get any feel. We haven't, we haven't achieved that result. The concept is they haven't been achieved because of the size of the lots.
But those are in the growth areas. In the growth areas, how can you preserve rural character in a growth area? It's pretty hard, isn't it?
Well, when you have a, a-
Is that an arcy warm zone?
Yeah, but I'll tell you, some subdivisions we've had in the, in the R4 district don't, don't reflect the, the character out there, they look like weeds sprung up, houses sprung up like weeds in the middle of a field. See that on Thompson Road, see that a number of places.
Yeah, I guess it's just me because I don't pitch up Thompson Road as a rural area.
It's coming less and less that.
But, but how long has that been there? What's new on the Thompson Road?
Nothing.
Exactly, it's been there for freaking years and years and years. So you can't change what's already there because, you know, nothing's-
Well, what, what's really been happening is with family divisions. We don't have subdivision here, we have family divisions. Family divisions sidestep subdivision law. It actually doesn't, but they end up doing it because it's incremental. And usually we don't run into the problem until they violate a law. By then it's too late to do anything. We have a huge number of problems with family divisions.
Yeah, the problem, the problem comes when, when the families decide to take off and want to sell it to somebody else.
Got it, and there's no review, we have no review. We try to oversee the staff, I mean, we're trying to oversee the staff.
Let's go to the complaint, I think we're sort of growing up on standards.
We are, but I mean, and that, see, this is an issue. This is, this is, it's always an issue that we do. But I mean, the issue really is, gee, you know, are we, I mean, if we don't, if we don't want to ask the complaint committee to look at that issue, then we won't, we'll just stay with, with it the way it is.
What, family development?
Uh, no, just, just the rural, the, the R4.
You have to remember that rural is not the eye of the beholder.
That's the question I asked you the, on the night of my interview, John. What do you mean by rural? Are you talking cultural rural or are you talking visual rural?
Even visual, I mean, the concept of rural, somebody from Boston has a whole different concept of rural than someone from Rundle than someone from Prescott.
Exactly, but I think the thing that's important is, I would wager that most of the residents in the town of Rundle don't care if the guy from Prescott has a different perception of rural or the guy from Boston or the guy from Nebraska has a totally different perception of rural. He cares about his perception of rural. This is his town, he has a preconception of what rural is and he wants the town to stay in whatever that preconception is. And the big question is, so what is that rural? Let's define what rural means to you.
Depends upon which residence you're trying to-
Exactly, but there's, but there, there, there's, there's got to be some commonalities. There are, there are commonalities in visual perception, there's commonalities in cultural perception. It's not like we have Indonesians here, a large body, and we have a totally different perspective than the primary Caucasian population we have. You know, we have, we have-
We have people from Massachusetts here.
Who, who think their rural means that their neighbor's more than 30 feet away from them.
One acre, one acre or less large.
You get somebody from up in the county that figures that the blue top on the house is rural character. Would violate and install some abandoned cars in the front yard.
I think, I think you're behind the times, it's now Tyvek.
Yeah, it's Tyvek. Main siding is Tyvek.
Main siding is now Tyvek. It goes bad in six months.
There's a question though, you said, you know, that, that you're not looking for the comp plan to do a complete rewrite and then in the next breath you said they have to look at-
What, definitely recent?
The zones that we've been working on, they could look at the residential zone and they could look at the rural zone, they have to look at the new business district. So how is that not a complete rewrite?
What if it involves all the population and the economics?
Well, they have to do it anyway, what, two years or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, ten years, 2007.
That was five years ago, six, no, but-
I thought you just said it was 2004 that they did the work.
That's when they did the work. That's when they did the work.
So they need to start it.
Approved in 2005 and then you did an update in 2017.
2000, yeah, November 14.
So the next time you would be legally responsible for doing another update is 17.
It was approved in 05, right?
But it was about-
It was amended in 07.
That's the last update.
The only concern I have about looking at the comp plan is the same concern I would have if they, if Congress would have called a constitutional convention. I don't care what you tell them, it's all up for grabs, they can look at anything they want. It's the comp committee, they can look at anything they want.
They can.
Anything they feel like doing.
But there's going to be a, I'm sure there's, I'm sure, that selectmen have, have a limitation, they, they want results from all these parties within a certain specified period of time. I believe you guys would get, want results, you have deadlines for us all, don't you?
I, I was looking at something else while you were talking, I wasn't paying attention.
That's okay, I'm used to that.
I knew what you were going to say.
Oh, my comment was that because you've called the comp committee together, there is nothing that says they cannot rewrite the entire comp plan. They are the comp committee, they could do whatever they want to do.
Right, but, you know, I-
I think they, I'm not saying they will, I'm saying that's a possibility.
As being a member of the complaint committee, and the same thing with Tom Danley. I mean, and I would suspect that, you know, Todd will probably be at a first meeting and possibly Tad.
Possibly?
Definitely. I mean, you know, we have to impress that, guys, this isn't, you know, we got to get this moving, right? Because, you know, you guys want to do a, an ordinance, you want to get an ordinance update, get the voters soon, so, you know, we really got to, because this isn't another five year project.
We actually, this is a way to make this only chance.
I would, I would love to see the town with something, you know, an ordinance in November, but it's up to Sydney today, I don't, that's not going to happen, so I don't think so.
Now, with the complaint committee also, you know, take all of this stuff, that's going to take time. So I think June would be more realistic. But, you know, as we know, that's not that much time. It's not that much time. So, you know, that's why I was saying, is there any scope that this board wants to, wants to, instructions or requests this board wants to make to the complaint committee?
DB1, DB2?
I, I would just say, look at what planning board's already done and see what you think.
Yeah, that's, that's a full plate by itself.
Right, it is. This is, this is the way the planning board's been thinking about it, it's good input for the comp plan. See if that fits with what the, what the committee's feeling is.
You don't have any EDC people in there?
I don't think so.
All right, that's pretty simple instructions.
It's, it's not quick.
No, it's not going to be quick.
You sent out an email concerning where's Moses, is that going to be on our agenda next week?
Do you want it to be on your agenda? I guess my question to you is, do you guys want staff to do that or is that coming back to you guys? Because I got to tell them.
Is it, is it a de minimis type situation?
Did you like?
Yeah, I did. But don't you have criteria to judge whether it is a staff decision or a court decision? Isn't there, you know?
I, you know, no. I do if it was a new application. This is an amendment to an approval granted by the planning board. And you, in some cases, you guys have granted us the authority to make changes over Kate's, over Kate of Rundle and where else, under the project. And where we came to you and said, this is, this is a small change they want to make, would you let staff, do you believe staff can act on your behalf for it?
What?
Do you think that this is a small change?
I think it's a big change.
I think so, but I wanted to find out from you. So I think, I think they should come back to us.
I'm not sure I really like to, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure I feel comfortable with, let's put, park the cars out on the gadget. I'm just, that's a display, outdoor display that, that wasn't, that's in the buffer zone.
Object was to create a buffer.
All right, I'll tell them that we really, that you want to see them on the staff, you know, do it. Is there some staff? Can you do anything?
There's staff.
There's staff.
Well, you said something about seasonal cottages, are we just brushing on the end of that being that?
Yes.
Something like?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, seasonal cottages, just begin negotiations on ways of alternatively financing the end project. And it's no secret, the board knows that they approach the town and the selectmen, but a tip district and that's going to be explored enough early and they have done a lot more work on it. And they have done a lot more work on that. And the selectmen are aware of it, and that we're gonna be meeting and having more discussions on this. Whereas this, we could come up with a pull-up program to jumpstart this project.
I remember a TIF district means that the town doesn't collect taxes for a number of years.
They have it in six, what they proposed in right now is six years.
Six years.
But that's all emotional.
It's all emotional. Yeah, I mean, that, that's how, actually, I thought that was killed. That whole, it's basically, it used to be called the tax give-back, but that's how this thing came in. But it's, it's basically, it's a return of investment back to the developer to do the improvement. It's a return of taxes back to the developer that, so that they will make the infrastructure improvements. So the town doing the infrastructure improvements, and then using the tax dollars from the developer to pay off the bond. It's basically saying, ah, we're not gonna charge you any taxes during this time period. And they use that money in order to make the infrastructure improvements. And the infrastructure, remember, remember what the bond that I originally had called for was a little under $2 million for the first phase? That was very optimistic. The expenses out there, but we know it's all inch out there. And there are more thorough investigations have found that the cycle streams are... So the costs are very high.
What infrastructure are we talking about?
The infrastructure, well, basically, our return of, or not giving them taxes, they get a tax holiday, basically. They would use that money for building the resort, the line, you know, and the...
Infrastructure of the resort itself.
Of all the resort infrastructure. They've already made a huge investment into the pump station. KKW didn't do that on their own accord, that was seed money provided by these guys. And I would argue that's substantial start on the project. Because that's a lot of money they put in there. And it was a huge, it was a huge improvement, not only for their purposes, but for the town, it was town running.
Let me see if I understand this correctly. It's a, it's a, I can't even correct term. It's a period of time in which they're not going to have to pay property taxes. Are they not gonna have to pay property taxes on all of the improvements? Or are they not gonna have to pay property taxes, period?
The first six years, they pay nothing, and then the other years, it's reduced.
Okay, but wait a minute now, the owners of these seasonal cottages, you got individual owners, why would they be paying the property taxes? When sold units occur, those people will. But this is, this is, there's still, I'm hesitant to talk too much about it because there's still a lot of negotiating points right now. And the selectmen are gonna start off that, and of course, obviously, we've gotta go to the town. So this is gonna, there's gonna be no secrets in this at all. It's gonna be full disclosure, you're gonna have a full idea of what the program is. So it's just, I, I, Todd and I met with them, and we did our initial, and it was a lot. They came up with a more sophisticated program than what we thought it would be. It looked good, I think it's got some real potential.
Is there, is there protection if the project fails? If the town has put in all this money and then they...
See, the difference is, unlike traditional, what if you lost?
We lost whatever property taxes we were...
But if the, if the project fails, you're not gonna get the property taxes.
That's their argument, right? Their argument is, if we don't get a TIF, we're not gonna go through with the project.
So we got, we're gonna have a failed project.
So either we get a little bit of money, or we get no money. In either case, it's still a significant amount of money. But as Dad said, it's still, it's still in the early phases. The board kinda sat back and said, you know, is this really the right thing for the town? So, you know, some more homework that needs to be done before it comes back to the selectmen and we make a decision on whether we want to forward or not. I have reservations on it, maybe there's some people that really don't know enough about TIFs. And that was my question, I don't know a lot about TIFs, is this the right thing for the town to do? Tom kinda reflected those same sentiments, and has gone back to Todd, and Todd can give a little more research for us. We're gonna be meeting with them folks, so.
We're gonna be meeting with them, like, two weeks? Three weeks?
Is that, is that a email?
Right, thank you, good, thank you, Japier.
Can I put one on the decision?
I need, I need to work over two other things.
That's what I was gonna say, I want you to go on.
Jones Wood subdivision. Guys, remember that one? Mr. Jones, way back, Mr. Jim Jones.
Before he went to God?
Yeah, yeah, before, before he got the little way, franchise. He had a subdivision way back. You guys approved it. He never did it. He didn't start in two years. And therefore, he doesn't want to do it. He wants the land to revert back to a single lot. He wants to undo the subdivision. That's terrific, and I told him to do that. He said, no, no problem, you don't, you wanna, you wanna kill your subdivision? Just file a new plan with the, with the registry of deeds, yeah?
But is it already dead?
It's already dead, but you see, the thing is, it's still in the registry of deeds of subdivided land, which means he's paying residential property taxes on those six lots. So what he wants to do is do that, but his attorney says, well, you're not following the law. And the law is, according to our subdivision ordinance, that the planning board has to, has to basically notify. And I know this wasn't on the agenda, we're kinda doing this in the planners.
Well, I saw it in the emails.
I'm gonna give you all that in the mail. It basically, oh gosh, the tag fell off. It basically says that you have to, we have to provide a notice to the...
Registry deeds?
Registry deeds. So we're gonna have to do a notice and notify them that they need to eliminate the subdivision.
So are we confident that none of the lots were sale or sold?
Yes, yeah, we've already done the research, and they're all in his name. There are no BMSs on it. The only improvement he ever did was he did some limited tree cutting. It was not substantial start. And he does wanna do the subdivision. So what I would say is, we'll probably have to do, do the notice, but we're gonna have to take official actions, not on the agenda, I think we're gonna have to make an agenda next time.
On the agenda for the next meeting.
So should we get an affidavit or something from him indicating that none of the lots were ever offered? Or they might have been offered, but they never...
I can get that from the assessor.
They were never sold?
Yes. The assessor, the assessor can provide you information that none of the lots were conveyed, that he still has the sole ownership of all properties, including the open space. And I've got, I'll get a letter from him requesting that we make such a notification to the registry of deeds to take it off.
Isn't this just a simple administrative thing that staff can do? Does the planning board have to make a decision on that?
It says the planning board, it doesn't say staff.
Do they have to make a decision, or just sign the letter that goes to the registry?
Well, maybe they do.
Because if it's in the register, they're supposed to do it anyway.
I think to make it official, we'd have to make the decision that we wanted to sign the letter and send it off.
You could sign it.
I just wish he would have come to us years ago.
Well, actually, we got a lot of tax extra tax dollars.
Well, I'm glad we did, but I feel guilty.
Who had a letter? Why don't we, why don't we...
Exactly, but when I'm at the general, I'll get all the letters together, and you guys look at the data and take care of it.
I guess that raises the question to me, is it, is it our responsibility to pay attention to the subdivision to see if they actually go through with it, or if they don't? Should they not be coming back to us when I'm not doing it?
I think, I think it's solely their responsibility.
I agree, and I don't wanna have to keep...
Ultimately, I would, if it was up to me to make the decision, I would say him stand up in front with an amended subdivision plan that takes six lots back to one.
Which is amazing, anyway.
Clean, yeah.
He has to do that, I mean, just because we give the notice doesn't mean that... There's always this, there's a presumption that it would be a hostile action on the town's part. And it probably would be in most cases, but here we have a willing participant who says, I don't wanna be a subdivision anymore. My initial response to him was, file a new plan that shows one lot. Just file it, you don't need our signature, and then you can just file that plan. And he said, my lawyer, well, let me do that. I've gotta get this notice that's required by your subdivision here, and so I went, okay, fine, great. So I'll take care of it, get the letter to you next week with the data.
Okay, the other item you have?
What's the other one?
I just remember the weirdest...
Kate's. I've already told them, but I'll inform you. Yeah, Kate's wants to put up their cow barn, if you wanna do it in the straight way. You can do a cow barn of 500 square feet, you got it, buddy. But still, it's conditionally used, it's part of the original approval. You guys, this is not, it's not a house. You have an agricultural demonstration facility, and the house is part of the business. It's not a house unto itself, so they're not trying to separate. They were saying, oh, no, it's a barn associated with the house. Ah, yeah, nice try. So I've already told Chris, no, sorry, you have to go to the family. I'm just notifying you that that was my decision and my notification to him that this is a, an application or an approval that was granted by the planning board. And any changes, which you're supposed to keep track of, have to be part of that amendment to that approval. Now, one of the things about it, we're not gonna do this for a spring house or something, this is not gonna be a small barn.
No, but if the approval did include cattle, I don't remember if they had housing for the cows.
Remember, originally, they're just gonna put a couple of beef cows out there. I think you brought up the point, well, it's not dairy.
Milk sixteen head, which is great, wonderful.
That's wonderful, that's terrific.
That's definitely rural neighborhood.
That's right.
Bob's looking forward to it.
Bob's looking forward to the springtime, whatever he thought.
I guess, and what do you want from the approval process? From the, you just want a location, and you want elevations and all of this, that stuff?
Location, she was just gonna... I don't know that we need a whole lot of detail, but we need some...
That's right.
Yeah, so some elevation, right?
Give us an elevation of barn, you gotta know what you're gonna be building anyways.
How much? Yeah, I guess, I guess the question becomes, how big is this barn going to be? Because he does have free space that he has to keep open.
Well, he's also up to 50,000 square feet.
I know, but he's still got to keep a certain amount of that space as open space. And I don't know, I don't know how big...
He's well armed, but he's on it. And if you figure the house is about 5,000, and the, the, the actual building, the factory, is 20,000.
Is that all that is?
It's only 20,000.
I'm gonna guess the barn's gonna be somewhere around 50 by 100, something like that.
So it's gonna, it's not gonna be that big. What, 16 head? It'll probably expand. 16 head? I hear Ben in this somehow.
No, Ben shouldn't be in this.
Ben's gonna funnel the cattle for the trees on the other side.
It just sounds like Ben.
No, he probably got a conventional, put in an automatic milk.
That's why he welded, yeah. We have a cattle drive.
The only other thing I have to report is, we did do a rather large, complex staff review yesterday. And I'm pleased to announce that Champagne Energy is building their new office building on the tattoo parlor site. And they're basically going to raise the tattoo parlor, and they're putting a new building. And it's reconstruction, and it's within the square footage for staff. And it's less non-conforming. It's still non-conforming, there's actually a triangle about the size of this table, a billable area that needs to stand. So it's less non-conforming. And it's gonna be a new signature gateway building. It's going to be a pink roof, metal roof, concrete, clavoured, stone masonry, new wall. It's gonna add door columns, and it's got a eyebrow pediment in the front, drop-off, and a couple of gable pendants, it's a gable building, very nicely done. And they got approved yesterday.
So they'll keep their industrial part of their facility right where it is?
That's not moving. This is, this is their administrative office, this is their world headquarters.
Well, no, no, give, give some visibility to their business.
It's a nice, it's gonna give them great visibility, it's gonna solve a problem property. This is the gateway area, and we've been talking about pushing the DV1 up there and making a little gateway area up there. And in fact, the residents have been asking us to do that, as you know. Again, a number of brokers, and just-in-time antiques is, of course, is talking, not just, nothing new. As we talked about, and the property owners. We have property owners that are really excited about this. So I think it's, I think it's a big plus. It solves a, a really big problem, and keeps a longstanding business here in the town. And gives them much more visibility, as you say. And they're happy as, they're very happy about that whole process, so.
It'll make a very nice image when you come up over the railroad track, and you see that's gonna look really nice.
It's gonna be very nice, it really is. Yeah, it is goodness, it really is goodness.
Just quickly, anything on the composting facility?
Yes, the case was heard in court last week.
Last week, yeah.
Yeah, it is, so I was presented, reported. Unfortunately, I was on vacation, I really would have liked to have attended. Todd tells me that our attorneys did an excellent job, and we expect the judge to make a ruling in about two weeks.
Who represented the town?
It was, what?
Leah.
It was Leah, Leah Ration of Bergen Park Center. We worked with her a lot, and she did a good job. So we'll see what happens. Could be a Liam Marquez. If the judge goes against us, we would have a seriously Liam Marquez, so. Then MMA might take it, pay a little attention. We'll see what happens.
We don't need the MMA.
No, they'll, they'll, they'll wait until they ask. So that, that was done, I don't think I have anything, anything else worth more.
I think that's pretty much it. Do I have a fork in?
Some...
I can't make it.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay.
No public comment?
Oh, yeah.
I think I've been commenting all night.
We have to vote the motion down first.
I don't know.
Who's kidding?
The public's been commenting all night. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, are you gonna control that public count?
Public count first, the sheltering, the public count first.
Okay, we gotta vote.
Yes, one in favor?
Yep, we're all here.
Thank you. Yeah, go turn that off, I have to go on with it.
Okay.
Oh, somebody forgot to turn it off.
Oh, you didn't turn that on?
We did.
You're gonna have to watch the, watch it on TV here.
Daniel Allen. Did you want these back? With the custom...
Yes, we leave them as checked.